To order this special city council meeting for Tuesday, November 16th, please rise for the pledged legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. Holly, we call the roll, please.
Lanyon.
Present.
Pratt.
Present.
Bellinger.
Here.
Siebel.
Present.
Reins.
Here.
Gilroy.
Here.
Hansen.
We did receive notice that Terry was unable to be here this evening, so I would entertain a motion for an excused absence.
Motion to excuse Terry.
Do I have support?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Now, we have approval of the agenda for this evening. This is our special city council meeting for the city manager interviews.
Motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have an opportunity this evening for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. I do not see anybody in the audience, so we'll move right along. Holly, if you would please bring in our first candidate, which is John Stopples.
Good evening.
Good evening, John. How are you?
Social distancing, I approach the dais normally, but.
That's all right.
We're here.
We've all been around each other enough that I think we have herd immunity.
That's your hope, so this has got to come to an end one of these days.
Right. Well, John, I'm Mayor Gilroy. Welcome this evening. We're glad to have you here as an applicant for our city manager position. I just want to go over a little bit of how this is going to work. We are going to have a series of questions for you, approximately 22 questions. We'll give you an opportunity to ask questions to us at the end. We're going to do this round robin, so each of us will ask a question, then we'll come back around until we finish. You might see us taking notes, that's just so that we can make sure that we remember what we need to remember about your interview. So I'm the.
Mayor.
Mayor. Gosh, you guys. I have been the mayor since 2017. I have a very, very good council that surrounds me, and I will go ahead and give them an opportunity to introduce themselves, starting with Noah.
My name's Noah Bellinger. I'm the mayor pro temp. I've been on council for probably 14, 15 years. Been mayor, been other things, on several other boards. I'm here to support our community and do the best we can to help the people.
Brandon Lanyon, I've been a council member for roughly a year now.
My name's Tom Pratt. I've also been a council member for just about one year. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm Chuck Siebel. I'm a new council member.
I'm Dan Reins. I've been on council about four years now.
And I've just had city manager in my brain for so long, so that's why I don't want the role of city manager. And that's why it just, you know, couldn't think of the word mayor for a minute. But again, thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thanks for inviting me. I really appreciate it. I've been in Williamson for years.
All right, absolutely. All right, so I'm going to start out and jump right into these questions. What skills and abilities do you have in creating, updating, and implementing strategic plans and community vision? What is your depth of experience in working on master plans? And if you need us to repeat any questions at all, or need us to slow down, please, and take your time with your answers.
Well, if you've obviously seen my resume, I've been in a number of towns. Strangely, my longevity in each town is longer than what's typical for a city manager, and it's because when I get there, I usually set some goals. Strategic planning is one of the more initial steps that I do take, trying to figure out what the community's needs are, not only from the perspective of the city commission, but also the employees as well as the residents. Because let's face it, we all work for them, and to know what the community's wanting to do. I've been involved in, I'd guess, over the years, a half a dozen master plans. Recently, just redid one in St. John's, and we included the neighboring township in that so that it was a joint master plan. So strategic planning, like I said, is something very important. I include the CIP as part of that, and making sure that you have a very, very detailed CIP, understanding that you're not going to be able to fund every project on that list. I don't think this community can do that. But the purpose of having a very detailed list, and almost doing it old school, of having it on the wall, so that it's something everybody sees. And anytime, especially at budget time, you look at what's the greatest priority, because priorities do change periodically. And so what might have been number one on the list last year might move down to two or three because something has now come up. So to have a CIP as part of your strategic plan is very important. So like I said, I've been involved in a number of cities where they had CIPs, as well as new master plans. As well as master plans for downtown development authorities and for parks and rec.
Thank you.
Okay, a question for me, sir. What experience have you had with economic development activities while being sensitive to community concerns and goals? Give us examples of successes and/or any disappointments.
I can point to the most recent success. I've been involved in economic development throughout my career, particularly when I was in Brighton. When I was in Brighton, Brighton was the fastest-growing community in the Midwest. We were literally giving out building permits for houses off a pad. Just tanning. Yeah. I'll get right into the regret was, we probably should have hired somebody new to monitor that. We had a building inspector, the building inspector did all the inspections. But as far as looking at site plans and looking at designs for new buildings, we just didn't have the time. So my regret is that we probably didn't hire somebody right off the bat. But we were pressed for money at the time, even though the development was coming in and none of them were paying taxes yet. So we had very limited funds. Probably the greatest success I've had in economic development, I've done that in every town, is the most recent one in St. John's, when we attracted the state's largest single development in probably 40 years. Actually, larger than the Clarence Hospital in Lansing. It was $500 million, so a half a billion dollar project for dairy processing cheese. Glambia Proline, that's the name of the company, companies. We worked with them for almost two years, not even knowing who they were. They were so secretive of who they were and what, you know, that we knew what they wanted. We knew there were five of the communities in the state that were, they were interested in, but we didn't even know who they were. And so we worked with LEAP, we worked with Clinton County Catalyst, as well as Bingham Township, to put together a plan. We hired a top-notch attorney firm to put together an agreement. We came to that agreement fairly quickly, once we started working with them. And, I mean, this thing went off without a hitch. I mean, they started building right about the time COVID started, and it was fearful that the state was going to shut them down, but there was a lot of lobbying going on, which allowed them to stay open, because at the time, it was going to save the dairy industry in Michigan. I had actually drafted a letter to Greystone, which is the main farm mortgage company, and said, what can you do to save these farms? Because at the time, they were actually trucking cows out of the state to other states, and we were really worried about a lot of local farms, not only there, but, you know, pretty much all over the state, just failing. And then having this cheese plant there and not having the good supplies of milk. So they did what they could to preserve, and despite COVID, they, you know, the state didn't give cities authority to enforce the mandates. And there were a number of people in town, a lot of businesses in town, that thought that Glambia should stop construction, and we knew the time was of the essence. So myself and police chief actually worked with the Glambia group and said, here are the protocols. Can you live by them? Absolutely, they could. And so we just made sure that stuck by them. And to this day, I've not heard that any one person got COVID during that entire time. There was over 1,000 people working on the site at any given time, and they came in under budget and under time. So it's up and running and producing 800,000 pounds of cheese on a regular basis. I mean, it's, it's pretty phenomenal to see. So I would credit that as probably my biggest economic development story. And we, in St. John's, were the envy of a lot of cities across the state. Interestingly, I'd just come from Eaton Rapids, and when they, when they first came to the area, and I thought, oh, boy, if Eaton Rapids gets wind that, you know, they're looking for a place. I knew Eaton Rapids could have stolen it from us very easily, because Eaton Rapids has their own power. And they could have offered them electrical power, so I had to be very careful in who I talked to, because, you know, if somebody from Eaton Rapids called me and said, hey, what's going on up there? I'd say, oh, the usual, just day to day. You know, we just didn't want anybody to know, because, I mean, while we gave them a 15-year tax abatement, their water consumption was double what they originally anticipated. So the revenues just on the water side was a big plus for us, and it worked to our advantage for the CIP. So there's a number of water projects that'll be going on in the next couple of years because of that.
Cool.
So we really feel like we pulled a real coup on that.
Thank you. Thank you for those examples.
You bet.
All right, so how do you approach working with citizen groups and neighbor associations or groups that have an interest in our local government?
Just being involved. I've always been members of, a member of different service clubs. Currently, I'm a member of the Rotary and Kiwanis Club. That's where you get to meet the most people. I make sure that I always shop in town. I, you know, do business in town. I do, I eat my meals in town, and I make sure that I get to know people. I'm also quite involved with downtown development authorities and principal shopping districts, which I think is key, because without, without a viable downtown, your town's not going to be viable. And I'm very proud to say that when I first went to St. John's, there was not a good working relationship between the city and the DDA. There was a lot of animosity, and it was because some members of the DDA didn't understand that they, as a DDA, they were a division of the city. And so they kept saying to me, well, the city keeps putting into our business. I said, oh, no, wait, wait. No, the city is what gives you the authorization. We want you to be independent, but you have, there's certain things you have to abide by, and your budget is one that we approve. And so you need to be very specific in what you're looking for. So once that relationship was improved, we saw a big difference in attitudes on both sides, both from the city as well as the DDA. And I'm very proud to say in the last two years, COVID, despite that, there was 25 new businesses in the downtown. And they're good businesses, they're not, and I don't mean to suggest that a pizza place or a hair salon is not a good business, because obviously they are, but a lot of communities find themselves with six pizza places downtown, four hair places. While we have that in St. John's, we also have a number of other shops. We have two custom chocolate shops, next to Mama Pa, hardware, like here, candle shop, sundries, boutiques, clothing. So very, very viable downtown. I'm very proud of what we've been able to do over the last couple of years. So that's what, that's why people get interested and stay interested in what's going on in the city, when they see those types of successes.
All right, John, how do you evaluate the performance of department heads and the activities for which they are responsible?
What's probably most important is to, first of all, understand the qualifications and the abilities of the individual department director. Are they properly trained? Do they have the proper amount of experience? And if that's the case, and they agree with me on most things, you know, from an administrative standpoint, I don't think there's really a need for real often evaluations. If they're successful and they're keeping their department working well, there shouldn't be a demand for a real intricate type of evaluation. However, if you've got a department director that's somewhat marginal or is new, then it's not a matter of sitting down criticizing what they're doing, it's a matter of sitting down and setting some objectives, some goals and objectives for them to follow, and make sure that they understand what their job description describes. So I think working one-on-one, for my benefit, I, I've been a public works director. I've been a planner. I've been a code enforcement officer. I've been a city manager. I've worked in just about every single area. I started my career in engineering department, so I have, I'm not going to say a little bit, I must say a lot of experience in a number of different areas. So when, when I can sit down with a department director and she and I, or he and I, can discuss day-to-day operations, and they understand I know as much, or almost as much as they do, that makes for a much better working relationship. So that's, when I first got into management, it was what they're calling new school. The manager should be a financial planner, should be a budgetary, be an accountant. And I had, my mentor was Fred Dolan, who was the longest-serving city manager in Eaton Rapids, at that time, 28 years. And he was old school. He got into public works first, really learned how the town operated from a fiscal standpoint, and was a very successful manager. And so I emulated that. My dad was also on city commission in my hometown, he was the mayor for a while, and that's where I really got my love for it. When he wanted me to go into business with him for an insurance business, I said, no, no, I'm going in the direction, and I'll never, I'll never forget. He looked at me and goes, you are a fool. And I said, well, you know that, I love it, I'm going to stick with it. So I've stayed in it all these years.
Can you please relate your experience in developing a community's identity? What programs and activities had a beneficial impact on developing a sense of community?
Well, I think the phrase, "a great place to live, work, and play" is so critical. That's been a buzz phrase around for 20, 30 years. And that is really the identity of a city. It's not whether or not, you know, the water department is running 100% or the sewer department is totally efficient, or the police. It's what people appreciate most about their town. Is there a good shopping district? Do they feel like they have to leave town to buy things? Can they stay in town? You know, is there a place to recreate? Is there a good, a good park system? Is there a good street system? All of those things are so critical. So to me, I think the identity of a community is what their recreational facilities are, and what, what keeps people happy, keeps them home. So there's not this mass exodus. I did notice when I first started working in St. John's, I was commuting from Lansing for a while. And I just was marveling at the fact that I was the only car going north in the morning to St. John's, but there was a steady stream of cars coming from St. John's going to Lansing. And so while most of the people in St. John's commute to work, when they get home at night, they stay there. They, they really liked their town. And I think that was another reason that Glambia was so important, is that we could now provide some employment for people so they didn't have to commute every day. So, but, yeah, I think the identity of a community is how people play, how they enjoy themselves, and how, you know, what they can do for the family and with the family.
Describe your experience in managing municipal finances. Give us an example or two of innovative productivity improvements or cost savings you have proposed, and their outcomes.
I think what my main claim to fame has been is being able to go into a community, number one, improve the productivity of the public works department if it's necessary, and the other is to identify problem budgets and basically start over, and develop a budget that's workable and doable. Financing, obviously, some things like revenue bonds is important, but building up a good fund balance and controlling your costs, especially the unfunded liability for not only retirement, but also COVID, that's critical. And once you have that in line, you're in much better position. One kind of innovative thing we did is, we had one of the, in Eaton Rapids, we had one of the old leathers wooden play structures. And it was built during a time when aluminized lumber was made with arsenic. And I had this sneaking feeling that, that was leaching into the ground, so I kind of went out on a weekend, didn't want to alarm anybody, took several soil samples, actually took it to a lab that I'm familiar with in Brighton, and I said, tell me what's in this soil. And of course, they found high levels of arsenic, and they also found high levels of lead gasoline. Finding out that later, where they built the playground, used to be a motorcycle track at the turn of the century. And evidently, that was where the pits were, and guys would just dump gas, and, you know, gas doesn't go away. So we had to thoroughly clean that, tear it all out. It was extremely difficult for the community, because many of the community members helped build it. But once they understood that it was, you know, a hazard, and I told the commission at times, I said, hey, now that we know this, we can't just sit back and let this to happen, because you know, five years down the road, somebody's child is going to have cancer. And it's not going to necessarily be pinned on this, but that's what they're going to think, and that's what's going to happen. So the innovative thing we did is, we were, when I first went to Eaton Rapids, you couldn't even find $1,000 to do anything. I mean, we were so tight at that point. And so what we did is, we borrowed the money from the water department, which was fairly healthy at the time, and the general fund paid back the water department. We cleared it with our auditors, made sure that it was legal, also talked to our attorney about it, and it just made for a really good way to get a new park pronto. And as soon as that went up, again, it was a community build that people forgot all about, you know, the old park, and they just were so happy that this new metal and plastic park is going to be a big attraction for them.
If a situation were to ever come about where you became privately involved in a business in Williamson, such as being an owner or part-owner, how would you make sure to keep your duties as city manager and private business owner separate?
Just wouldn't do it. I was a property manager part-time when I lived in Lansing, but that never had anything to do with Eaton Rapids when I was there, because it was a different community, and obviously didn't have anything to do with St. John's when I was there. So I just don't get involved.
All right, thank you.
Okay, my turn. Are you more of a leader or a manager? Describe for us how you exemplify the best of that quality.
I think the most important thing that a person can do in this position is work. And I've never shied away from long hours or days. I know when, I went to St. John's, the headhunter called Eaton Rapids, and they just randomly called people, you know, and said, what can you tell us about this manager? And I think the best compliment I got was, a lady who ran a coffee shop across the street said, well, he's at his office as often as I'm at my coffee shop, so I know he's putting in a good, hard day's work. When COVID hit, we in St. John's, I said to myself, we're not going to have any employees get this, and we're not going to hinder what we're doing. So we put in all the protocols, and I literally worked every single day for a year and a half, Saturdays and Sundays, just keeping on top of everything, making sure that there's work planned for the upcoming week when you're working with a half a staff, because some people were working from home, some people were working in the office, but then had to stay clear of each other. A lot of one-man crews doing jobs that normally two people would be doing. So I think that getting involved, staying involved, and being an example is probably the most critical. If I don't work more hours than anybody else in the city, then I don't feel like I'm doing my job properly. And that's just the way I've always been.
What do you see as our strengths as a community, and how do you plan on building on them?
You know, I don't know if you noticed in my cover letter, but this has been my dream job for decades. When I first went to Fowlerville, I was most impressed with Williamson. Got to know Steve Hughes, who was a former wastewater and city manager. In fact, he certified my reports in our lagoon system and followed before me. But I'm a big buff with antiques, and so I just fell in love with Williamson, and I still come here almost monthly to shop. I come here more often with my family. We love Taver 109. So, you know, it's, it's a very unique community. It's historical. It didn't fall to the whole urban renewal thing back in the 60s. The buildings have been well-maintained. You know, Williamson did what Howell did, but did it a lot sooner than Howell did. Now, Howell gets all the credit for painting everything in historic colors, but, you know, Williamson did it long before. And in fact, when I was in Fowlerville, they said, what do we do to purify our downtown? I said, look what Williamson did. Let's, let's get Pittsburgh Paint or somebody to come in here with an expert that says, here's the age of these buildings, and these are the colors that would have been used, and this is the pattern that they would have used. And we just put that out there. We didn't require anybody to do it, but if somebody wanted to paint their building, they had a number of swatches that they could choose from. So I think that the sense of identity and being a historic town, and there seems to be a lot of pride here. People love their town. I don't ever hear, you know, as a manager, you hear about communities that have a lot of citizen complaints. I don't hear that about Williamson. Maybe you hear it because you're involved in it more than I would be, but they don't, you don't have a reputation for being a city where the citizens complain about everything.
Thank you. Okay. What are our weaknesses, and how do you plan to overcome them?
I got a speeding ticket here one time, and I actually beat it because the, this is a funny story. I was driving through town, I was doing 35. I didn't realize that it dropped down to 25, and I don't, I think it's 35 now, because of the law. But at the time, the sign that said, reduce speed ahead, the Lions Club had put a poster on it that said, chicken barbecue this weekend. And I actually went up to Mason, and I showed a picture, the magistrate chuckled, and he looked at the police officer, and the police officer right here from town said, yeah, he's got us. I don't, I don't see any weaknesses here. I, like I said, I've enjoyed it, coming here often. Like I said, I come here with my family for meals. Every town can be improved from a standpoint of property management. I'm sure you've got houses in town where people don't take good care of their property. It's a very difficult thing to do. Code enforcement is probably one of the most difficult jobs that you can do in the city. When I went to Eaton Rapids, or not Eaton Rapids, St. John's, they had complaint-based only. And you could tell that it had been complaint-based only for about 20 years, because there were so many houses in town where people were just not caring what their property looked like. And that breeds contempt, and people in the neighborhood were following suit, they just didn't care. So recently, we went to a more proactive approach, and I would say, within six months, we started seeing a difference. So I don't know what it's like. I, you know, I see a lot of historic homes, but I imagine that that might be one of your weaknesses, like every other small town, that you've always got one neighborhood or two neighborhoods where people just don't take care of their property. And I think it's important to explain to those folks right off the bat that we're not here to issue you a ticket. We're here to let you know that there's a problem, it goes against the code, and here's some things you can do, and here's a period of time to take care of it. So probably property maintenance management is something every town, and I'm not, I don't want to identify Williams, because I really can't think of anything else that I don't like about this town, but obviously, I think that's something that can, like I said, anywhere. It's important.
Thank you.
What do you see as the most critical problem facing the city of Williamson?
State of Michigan. You know, I love my state, love the state government, but they keep bouncing their budget on our backs. You know, Mr., you know, the old tax thing, years ago, never imagined that tax values would go down, and there was no way to recoup that. And I think just about every small town, including myself, did the chart of, you know, here's the trend of where taxes were going. And after 2009, here's the track it went, and there was this big huge gap, resulting in hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then on top of all that, they did away with personal property tax. And I'll never forget, the, the state rep in Eaton Rapids came to a commission meeting with a big political smile, and he said, I've got great news for you folks. It's only going to cost you $150,000 a year. And I looked at, and I was probably outstuck by bounds being at a commission meeting, I said, what did you just say? And he said, what's the matter? I said, do you understand what $150,000 is? He goes, well, it's not much. I said, yeah, it's two police officers and a patrol car. What does that mean? I said, if you, if we lose $150,000 in revenue, we either have to make serious cuts someplace else, or we have to lose two police officers and not buy a patrol car next year. And that suddenly hit him, like, okay, we're dealing with millions of dollars on the state level, but here's a city who's dealing with tens of thousands of dollars, and you take 150 away, it cripples you. And so I think that, again, probably too critical, but I think the state has a number of times balanced their own budget on our backs. To me, the biggest fraud, shouldn't say fraud, scam, was money from the lottery is going to go to schools. And what ended up happening is, let's say, and I'm just using a random number, so let's say they really did $5 million. They put $5 million into the budget for the schools, but then they took $5 million out and put it someplace else. And nobody's ever explained to us why that happened. So when, even the commercials today, you know, X amount of million dollars went to the schools last year. Well, yeah, but nothing, it's the same lot that's always going. So if that were to go away, where's that money going to come from? So, that's my soapbox, sorry. But I think every city has to realize that there's been some bad decisions at the state level that have affected us, and sometimes they don't understand and don't care.
What is the most important skill or talent a manager can have when it comes to council manager relationship success? And please tell us about a time when you needed to use that talent to build or improve relationships.
First of all, you have to understand what the collective commission's expectations are and what individuals are. As a manager, I could probably call each and every one of you once a day, once a week, once a month. Really depends on what your interest is, and what, how much hands-on, or how much knowledge you want to have. And I realize that everybody's got full-time jobs when they're commissioners and that makes it difficult. So I've never been one to call too often, but if it's something critical, something's happened in the police department, for example, and you need to be aware or, you know, something happened in the cemetery or something, you know, something that's political, you need to know about that. But the way I've dealt with that over the years is I have what I call the informational update. It's for short, it's called IU. It comes out every two weeks. I write it to the commission specifically and it basically says enclosed in this communication is updated information on a number of outstanding projects and issues. So anything that's current, anything that you might have seen on your last few commission agendas or will be seen in the next month is in there and it's usually no more than, you know, a paragraph that said, "Here's the status of this project." So that you've always got an update from me at least every two weeks and if something critical happens, you'll hear from me that day. And then, you know, obviously every commission member gets on the commission for a different reason. There's things that you have more interest in than another commission member and I want to know that. And so that if one of you is more interested in what's happening in the fire department, you'll be the first one I call if there's an issue. So getting to know what the individual commission members desires are as well as the collective group.
All right. We're about halfway through.
Okay.
What tools and techniques have you used to keep the community informed and engaged with what is going on in their local government? How do you know if it is working as well as it can be? And examples would be either city webpage, social media, news outlets.
Well, that's changed a lot. You know, it used to be I feared phone calls from newspapers because, and radio stations because they were always digging for dirt. They didn't really want to know what the facts were. They'd heard some rumor and they would bait me with different questions. So when newspapers and that went away, it was not only, it was kind of a double-edged sword. Okay, you don't have to deal with that type of journalism anymore, but there's really no good way to get information out. And of course, you know, we're guilty of it. St. John's, we spent a ton of money on a new website and people don't use it because to them it's easier to go to Facebook page. And while the city can have a Facebook page, it's never as popular as the one that's for the city done by some resident. And that's where the negativity comes in. And I tell you, I've heard this so many times, but Facebook is of the devil. It really is. It fosters so much angst and bad opinions from people. So having to not necessarily respond to everything that's said on or posted on Facebook, but to take a reasonable amount of time after, you know, let's say, "Oh, did you hear this?" And suddenly there's a hundred and fifty comments and seventy-five percent are negative. You don't respond to those. What you do is you put out a press release, you put something on the own Facebook page and say, "Hey, did you know?" And here are the facts. And usually that's the best way because people will look both places. They're not going to be just looking at the negative Facebook page, but they're going to go to the city's Facebook page and to look for the true information. So make sure that it's there all the time. The other thing is, is we in St. John's had just hired a company of Lansing to do a, put together a program by which the city, how they put information out, a marketing plan, if you will. So I don't know that, you know, that's something you would want to do here, but I think you need to have a plan that says, "This is how information gets out." Used to be you could put things in the water in Sewer Bill, but people see that the same as they do the Consumers Energy Bill and it's just an enclosure and they don't even read it. When in fact, it might have had a nice colorful sheet that said, "Here's your recreational programs for your kids." You know, so I've seen that before as the water bill goes out, it's got a whole sheet on there about recreational activities and lo and behold, a week after the bills go up, start getting phone calls, "What are we doing for recreation this spring?" It was in slather, so they, you make copies and you send them out. So it is difficult, especially since you don't really always have a strong local newspaper anymore. Used to be able to rely on LSJ and I'm not being critical of them, but they've changed so much that people don't read it. So I think you need to identify what your community wants to see and how they want to get it and then make sure that they get it. Again, I have to also say that I think being involved in the downtown organization as well as service clubs is critical. I can't tell you how many times I go to the Qantas or Rotary meeting and I just proceed with questions. "What's this about the city and the water?" "What's this about the city and taxes?" You answer those questions and then that trickles out to the community and it's starting out with correct information versus an opinion that gets planted several times before it gets to you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on our fourteenth question for the other man. Tell us how you feel you would fit into our organization.
I'm a hands-on guy. I love historic cities, I love historic preservation. I like small towns. A lot of people that I went to school with, their goal was to someday be the city manager of Grand Rapids, the city manager of Ann Arbor. That was never my goal. It was always to work in a small town. I think it's much more hands-on, you have better knowledge of things. I've never shied away from jumping into a hole when there's a water main break if they needed help. And so my goal would be to become part of the operation from all levels and get to know the employees, get to know the people, the staff.
So what distinguishes the characteristics deeper from the table?
I think it's the years of experience and the fact that I was also sixteen years as a city commissioner in Brighton. So I bring both professional and political experience, not to mention I'm second generation. So I think that just my basic knowledge of local government is unique. You know, when I was a city commissioner, I said, "That was my hobby." And so people laughed, "So your hobby is the same as your job?" Yes, and I took great pride in that. So yeah, being involved in the community is very, very important. I stayed in Brighton because I promised my kids they would go to the same school district here through twelve. So when I left the city management position in Brighton, I ran for city commission a year later and I stayed there so that my kids could stay in school. So I ended up commuting for a number of years, but I live in St. John's now and I want to live as close to or part of the community more at work.
What issues do you feel would be the most challenging in this position and how would you work through those issues?
I think the communications, what you talked about earlier, how do you keep the citizens informed, how do you keep the citizens happy? I think that we're going to probably start seeing some downturn in the economy. I think there's going to be cases where people can't pay their taxes, they can't pay their water and sewer bill. They don't know specifically about Williamson, but I think in general, that's something that small towns are going to see. So I think that might become a challenge. I don't know what your personal opinions are, but I've monitored COVID from the start. We hit seventy-one hundred cases yesterday. That's the largest single day since this whole thing started and a lot of people don't realize just how serious that is. Fortunately, we're in the sixty percent range of people being vaccinated, you know. So I think that we're going to see a turnaround, but I think a lot of people are very hesitant to understand and recognize that we're not out in the woods yet. So I'm not sure how much that is an issue with you folks here in town. I stopped at my favorite antique shop on my way in tonight before I went through the industrial park and I noticed that the majority of people in the antique shop are wearing masks. So I'm seeing it, it's more of a small-town thing. I think people have more common sense in a small town. You go to the grocery store, you see most people doing that. So I just think that that's going to remain an issue for a while.
There will be interaction with the department managers. What strategies do you use that are most effective to help build consensus within the department?
I think having a staff meeting every single week is important. You get everybody at the table, you go around, everybody announces what their main projects are for that week. And if there's something that they're doing that they're going to need some assistance from, they can freely ask another department director to assist them however they might need. And that could be as simple as the fire department needs some extra hands for something they're doing so the DPW can meet with them during the week and get that done or vice versa. So again, staff meeting every week, making sure that everybody is on the same page of where we're headed, what the priorities are. And I also think that, I know a lot of people call it visioning, I call it brainstorming. Sometimes if there's an issue, it makes sense to bring everybody in the room and say, "Okay, here's a problem, folks. How do we solve this with you? What do you got?" And just move around the table and everybody shouts out ideas and pretty soon there's consensus on what the best idea or ideas are and then you approach it from that standpoint. But you have to give your department directors the credit that they deserve for knowing what they know. I think I mentioned earlier about when Glambia was being built in St. John's, there wasn't one case of COVID during the whole period of time. And that's because the police chief set up those protocols and worked with them, not as an enforcement arm, but as support. And I think it made a huge difference. So respecting and understanding what individual talents are among your department directors as well as your staff. You know, public works guys, sometimes they're hired for water or sewer to drive a truck, but people forget that they also have other talents. You know, they, they can do carpentry, they might be able to do plumbing, they might be able to do electric. So if there's a project that's needing to be done, for example, here in City Hall, there's not enough money to hire an outside contractor, you bring together your DPW guys and say, "Who's done this before? Who's laid carpet? Who's done tile? Who's done job ceilings? You have great. Bring them in and you can do it for about a third of the cost."
Describe your work style and how it would fit into a busy and demanding municipality office environment.
Yeah, hands-on and being here. I think one of the worst things you can do as a manager is to not have the same hours with the rest of the staff. You know, I've seen other managers say, "Well, I'll be in at ten because I've got this meeting and I've got that meeting and then I'm going to go over here." It might be true, but I think it's difficult for the staff if they don't see the lead person being there every day. And so being part of the operation is critical and you never know when a citizen's going to come in and say, "I don't want to talk to you, I want to talk to the manager." And you have to be available to be there and talk to them. That doesn't mean you don't bring the department director with you. But yeah, I think that being part of the day-to-day operation and being there is critical. That doesn't mean you can't go to a meeting that you need to go to, but you make sure everybody knows in advance.
All right, we have four questions left before we turn it over to you to ask questions.
I'm having a ball, so if you can link some more of this.
All right. Some of these are going to be scenario-based too for these last few questions. But as of March 2020, COVID-19 has had a direct effect on how daily business is carried out. What changes did you make to safety protocols because COVID, because of COVID-19? What is important to you regarding daily municipality activities and operations and being able to move forward with continued safety for the community and city staff?
You know, it's interesting, when it first came up, we had a meeting, this is in St. John's, in the staff meeting room at ten o'clock in the morning and we were kind of chuckling about, "Oh, there's this, there's this weird disease going around and, you know, we can't have food in the break room and we're not going to serve coffee anymore." And everybody kind of chuckled about it. But that afternoon, the governor came on TV and I had three employees right off the bat saying, "I'm going home. I'm not staying here." So we had to set up some protocols, some rules and respect people's individual opinions about it because I had employees that weren't going to get vaccinated and I had employees that couldn't wait to get vaccinated. And we had to pick and choose based on people's personal needs, especially those that had family because the schools weren't open, is that they were going to either work from home or they're going to work from the office. And if, if at all possible, if you were going to work half and half, then this person would work the morning, then go home and work from home and then this person would come in the afternoon and work from home in the morning. So I'm very proud to say that a ten percent infection rate in the state of Michigan and really nationwide out of sixty-some employees in St. John's, we only had one case when we should have had between six and seven. And that was somebody who was offered the vaccine early on and didn't take it. So had it not been for that individual, we would have had a hundred percent no infection rate. So I think setting up the protocols, City Hall is located in the county building. County building there is pretty state-of-the-art, pretty clean, pretty top-notch. We worked with them directly and said, "Look, if we're going to have rules, we have to have the same rules. If we're going to send people home, it's going to be when you send people home. When we come back to work is when you come back to work." So we just integrated that. And I think they had just as much success as we did with not many people getting it. And I know the employees in the end, even those that didn't really believe it or didn't think it was as serious as others people thought, they pretty much were thankful at the end because they realized that what we were having them do was protecting them and protecting the family.
Thank you.
Okay. Here's another scenario. Two department managers give you priority projects at the same time with the same deadline. How would you handle the situation?
Again, you have to call everybody in the room and say, "Okay, here are two things that need to be done." And both of these department directors have informed me that they don't have the staff, they don't have the resources to get them done. How do we work as a team to get this done? Which one has the highest priority? Which one has secondary priority but still has to get done? And you really just have to work together.
All right, I got a long scenario for you. So if you need me to repeat, let me know. It's a, you've just arrived at the office. There's a voicemail for you from a resident that is upset over the current water sewer rates and has had a water main break over the weekend that has not been completely restored in their neighborhood. The resident has mentioned in the voicemail that he will be calling the local newspaper to have a reporter come out and do a story on the subject. How do you handle the situation?
Well, I'm certainly going to hope that I would have been involved with it all weekend long and would have known exactly what happened, how many people were there, if we had difficulty getting people in. I would tell the person that, "Look, this is what happens. We're not going to always be able to restore the site immediately, but what we do is restore it to the point where it's safe. And if it's not drivable, we'll make sure that there's barricades to tape around it. If that hasn't happened, I guarantee you that'll get done that in the morning." I don't necessarily fear the referral to the newspaper because I think if, as a manager and department director on top of what's going on, you can explain it. There are some times when jobs like that, emergencies are handled really well, there's other times when they're not handled well and it's not always because of incompetence or somebody dropped the ball. Sometimes you can't get a repair part in time. I've had that happen several times where you've got an entire neighborhood without water and you're struggling to find one cloud twelve oh five hub to repair a water main. And I think that's what's important is having a relationship with the neighboring communities, whoever, Fowlerville, even Lansing, saying, "Look, when we need something, can we come and get it?" And vice versa. So you have these, what I'll call shared, like fire partners do, and just make sure that's there. I know when we had an emergency in Eaton Rapids, we lost ninety-five percent of the power in town and we were armed utility. And we called in Lansing, Portland, four or five other communities who basically came to town. We put them up on hotels, we provided them three meals a day. I got criticized because I smiled every week and people said, "Why are you so giddy about this tragedy?" I said, "Well, for example, on the first day, we restored twenty-five percent of the power. By the second day, we were fifty percent and by the fourth day, we were seventy-five percent." And it worked exactly how we planned it to work. And, you know, we actually paid them back. I mean, Portland had that major tornado and I called Norm up there and I said, "Hey, you came here to help us. What can I send?" He says, "I need two dump trucks and four guys right now." And we just drove them out there and took care of it. So I think that, you know, being able to work with other communities is critical and being able to say to the community members, "We're sorry that it happened, but it was out of our control. This is what we did to abate the problem and guarantee you that we did the best we could. And if something wasn't done properly, that person, that person, those persons that were responsible will be, not disciplined, but counseled and informed on how to do it better the next time."
Okay, we're on our last question. What would your past boss or supervisor or city council or mayor say about your work ethic?
Works too much. When I first started in St. John's, the mayor approached him, negotiated my contract and he said, "And by the way, you have four weeks of vacation and you will take them." And I kind of looked at him and I said, "I kind of doubt it, but okay, I appreciate you giving me the vacation, but that's just not, it's just not something I do." Yeah, you want family vacations, you need time off. If I leave early on a Friday afternoon, everybody's going to know about it before I leave, but sometimes you might just need that. But that doesn't mean I'm not going back for Saturday. I'm not sure if I answered that completely.
No, don't worry.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is kind of the closing. Is there anything job-related that would be important for us to know when considering whether to hire you over another qualified candidate?
You get somebody sitting at the table here that really loves this town. And like I said earlier, I've wanted to work here. I've seen it open a few times, but I was never in a position in the community I was serving at the time that I felt like that would have been an okay time for me to leave. I'm not a hop, skip and jumper. I don't do that. So the timing is actually perfect. When I saw it come up, I thought, oh my gosh, that's my job. I want to apply for that. So I think just to have the dedication and the desire to do this, I think my background in public works is important and my ability to redo a budget if you're in financial trouble at any time.
Okay. Now it's your turn. What questions or additional information would you like to share?
What do you consider to be the biggest challenges right now?
Infrastructure, water and sewer.
Okay.
Big, big time.
Is there one or two projects that are just beyond financial reach right now?
Well, you know, the infrastructure bill passed at the federal level.
Right.
We are on that shortlist that Representative Slotkin put forward. We put in a very good application, lots of citizen letters.
That's exciting news.
We, we definitely have some pocket neighborhoods that are in desperate need and trying to find funding has always been a challenge because we are not a impoverished community based on the state of Michigan's assessment. And so that's always something that we have to educate our community about is that, you know, everybody wants to know where our Flint money is. And we just, we don't have that. So that's one thing that we're always looking for is what can we do to make those improvements without it being detrimental to our tax base?
What's your latest situation?
We do not have. We've had, what? We had six lines, service lines that had to be replaced, but we did an entire assessment and we only had six, I believe.
Very good.
We did three replacements this year. We did, I believe, two last year. So yeah, I mean, we, you know, what, what our problem is, is that we have such aged water mains.
Assuming you're talking four-inch pit gas all over town?
Yep. And we have, we actually have, I believe, if Scott, our city man, our city engineer was here, there's probably some wooden water mains still in town.
One street, I think we have some that are go back to, what?
Almost on the grid.
Well, 1927.
Yeah. So.
I've got a piece of wood water main that I've had in my office for years. People look at it and go, oh.
Yeah, it does exist.
Yeah, it does exist.
So I'm going to, I'm going to say that that's our biggest hurdle that we need to get across is infrastructure. And how do we do it without going into debt and be able to provide the service that our residents expect?
First thing I would do, and you alluded to it earlier about water and sewer rates, I don't know where you sit in relation to other communities, but one of the first things I would do is figure out where you are at in comparison to other communities. And if they had to have an increase in water and sewer rates, that it is reasonable and that people understand where they stack up against. And one of the things I've always done at the same time is how to compare the tax rate as well as the water and sewer. So I'll say, this is, if you've got $150,000 hall in Williamson, this is what you can expect in taxes and this is what you're going to pay typically in water and sewer. How does that compare to Fowlerville? How's that compare to Weberville? How's it compare to East Lansing? So they've got a chart to look at because you'd be surprised at what people, they don't understand. The classic thing is somebody comes to the front desk and says, I'm going to pay you a salary. Well, actually, you can usually put 79 cents on the counter and say, I don't know either, because people don't understand that what they pay in taxes is more than to just the city. And the portion that comes to the city is rather small compared to the big picture. And so that we're not always working with a level of funds that they think that we are. So I think, you know, being fair in your water sewer rates and then, you know, I know you've got a nice industrial park. I'd be curious to see how many more acres are available. But I think one of the things, depending on what the community wants, I'd love to see some more industry come in because that can, especially if it's a high water use or a high sewer use.
What other questions?
You know, I had several, but they all got answered.
Okay.
Your questions tonight are, I would say, probably have interviewed over the years in a dozen places. This is probably one of the most professional, thorough interviews I've ever had. So I mean, it's, I'm impressed. Like I said, if you want to make up some more questions, I'm going to join myself.
Well, our, our time is almost done. So I just wanted to let you know that the process will be, we're doing our interviews this week and then we will reach out to the candidates that we'd like to have come back for a more in-depth second round of questioning. And Holly, our city clerk, will be in contact with you. She brought you in. I want to be very transparent. As you can see, this was taped. I don't know if you've seen any of our council meetings on YouTube, but once our interviews are completed, we will be very transparent. We will put this up on our YouTube channel.
That's great.
So yes, that's one thing that is very important.
If I was a successful candidate, I would want somebody coming to me and say, I don't know anything about you.
Right.
Well, and say, well, it's on YouTube.
Right. So next week is a short week because of Thanksgiving, but hopefully we'll, Holly will either be in touch before we go on the holiday break because we'll be closed on Thursday, Friday, or at the very beginning of that next week so that we can set up those next rounds of interviews.
Great.
All right.
Well, thanks for this. It's really a pleasure. And like I said, I just always love this town. I don't want to go overboard and tell you, but I have to say, right when I came, first got into this, was in Marine City and moved over to Fowlerville and just followed up on this area. I went to Michigan State, so the Lansing area is always been critical to me, so.
Great. Well, thank you so much for being here this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Take care, have a good evening.
Thank you. Um, no, I don't, I don't. Yep. So we will go into a brief recess starting at 6:27 and we will come back in in 10 minutes. We are now back in session at 6:36. Go ahead.
This is a hot seat, I assume.
Yes, it is.
Hi there.
Hi, welcome, John.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening. I am Mayor Tammy Gilroy and we're going to do some introductions. I want to let you know how this will proceed.
Sure.
Okay. I have been mayor since January 2017 and love this city, grew up here and just enjoy being, you know, helping the city move forward and having these guys surround me here at the council table. And so I'll go ahead and turn this over to Noah.
My name's Joel Bellinger. I'm the mayor pro town. Lived in Williamson for 37-plus years, have been on council 14, 15 years, had all the other positions.
Brandon Layne, less than, less of a resume than that. Council for less than, roughly over a year now. Lived in Williamson for almost four and just wanted to come and contribute to the community.
Hi, my name's Tom Pratt. I was born and raised in Williamson, but I've only spent one year on city council. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm Chuck Sebel. I'm new to council myself, so I'm at the least experienced.
We gotta go, right? Yeah.
I'm Dan Ryans. I've been on council for three, four years, right around there. Grew up here, really enjoy the community, decided to get on council and involved with it.
All right. So John, how this is going to work is we've got 22 questions we're going to ask. I'll start out. We're going to be round robin. So Noah will take the next one, Brandon and Tom, Chuck, Dan, then we'll start circling around again. And what we're going to do is we're going to ask those questions, we'll be taking notes. So if you see us writing, it's just because we want to make sure that we remember everything we need to as we're working through our candidates. And just to be transparent, every single candidate's getting asked the identical questions. We are filming. We will, at the conclusion of the first round of interviews at the end of this week, that will go up on our YouTube. And so if you need to have something repeated, please let us know. If we're moving too fast, not a problem. We can definitely take that time, but we'll go ahead and just jump right in.
Okay.
All right. So what skills and abilities do you have in creating, updating and implementing strategic plans and community vision? What is your depth of experience in working on master plans?
Yeah. First of all, thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. For the specifics, I've been a city manager for 14 and a half years and strategic planning is something that we've done annually since I was appointed there in 2007. It's a process that I brought. The community that I'm in currently did not have anything even close to a strategic plan. What the, the process was, there was a one-budget work session and people were focused on numbers and this number, that number, this mileage, that mileage. And really didn't talk about what the community priorities were or what they wanted to be. And so I created, and it's not revolutionary, you know, it's, it's just a simple getting together, meeting with council, bringing the staff perspective to council, having staff participate in that process, having the community participate in that process, as much as public meetings allow. I mean, you can't have a free-for-all, but having sections as you go throughout that strategic planning process, allowing their input. So that's really more towards, I guess, the community. And that's not a statutory document like a master plan or even like a downtown development plan. On those two fronts, we recently just updated our master plan in the city of Chelsea in 2000 and we just completed a complete overhaul of our zoning ordinance in 2001. And that's the second time that we've done that since I've been with the city of Chelsea. And I was also involved with that in two other communities, in the city of Royal Oak and in the village of Dexter at the time. I wasn't directly involved, I wasn't leading the process like I did here in Chelsea. And then with, as a DDA executive director, I've had that dual role for the last 17 years, 17 and a half years. So very directly involved with the DDA TIF plan, development plan, and then a subset of the strategic plan for, for the city, city governments that I've worked with. So direct experience with that. Like to think it's been successful, it's always been adopted and implemented. Couple of other things that I've worked on along the strategic planning vein, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which that is a, you're not required to have that as a statutory document, but it is a great pathway. If you go through that process and submit it to the state, it's a gateway to Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund grants, Clean Michigan Initiative grants. And so that's something that we've done for two cycles in the community that I work with.
All right. Thank you.
Question number two. What experiences have you had with the economic development activities while being sensitive to the community concerns and goals? Give us examples of successes and/or any disappointments.
Sure. So having that dual role of being the assistant in Dexter and then the city manager in Chelsea and then having that dual role of the, the DDA responsibilities, you know, starts with your great downtown communities like that, you know, the one town or one school, one town, which, which I've always, a little bit about my background, I'm sure there's a background questionnaire, but I'm going to throw this in there. I grew up in the city of Rand. You know, the community's, East Lansing, sorry, East Lansing. East Lansing's the largest city that I've lived in by choice. I've lived in Fenton, lived in the village of Picking, in the village, not in the townships. And then now in the city of Chelsea. So I have real affinity for, for small towns. And it really, economic development, not necessarily specifically with the DDA, but it starts with a great downtown. So really, that's the, sort of the driver. It's also, it's the balance of, you have to have a great master plan, you have to have a great zoning ordinance. And by great, it has to be easy for folks to understand. Those of us that are in it, you know, we can, we can get used to the tactical jargon or the acronyms, but you have to have a master plan that, that folks are, in a zoning ordinance that's easily understood for the people that live there and then for prospective businesses. And really, you know, in a community like, like Williamson where you do have, you do have some opportunities if you choose to have land, you have vacant land in the city, within the city boundary. And I'm sure that's been carefully thought out, carefully planned out through your master plan and through your zoning ordinance. And so that's, that's the whole key. As far as specific success stories, again, I think that if you drive through the village of Dexter, which is the city now, or the, or the city of Chelsea, I think you could see, you know, thriving communities in both cases. Very few vacancies, if there's any vacancies in the downtown or even in the outlying areas, they don't last for very long. So it's more of an overall, I guess, success story. I have had some very specific redevelopment experience, both in Dexter and then also, also in Chelsea. In Chelsea, there's two that come to mind. We had our, our police station used to be on Middle Street in the, sort of the heart of the historic downtown and building this building in the 20s, 30s. And so police station, we built a new police station and we moved that out of, still in the downtown, but off of that street and we were able to redevelop that. And there's two businesses there now and four apartments. And then also right on Main Street in downtown, there was the Longworth Plating and Livery, which, you know, is really kind of a weird combination when you think about it, metal plating and horses. But we were able to redevelop that building, also brought in a small grocery store and a coffee shop and four, four new apartments in downtown. So those are sort of the micro-level examples of economic development during the 2008, during the recession. As I said, I've been the city manager in the state community for about 14 years. So I've seen a lot of the trends in economic development coming up. We did have vacancies in our industrial park and so we were able to secure this stamp, which is a multinational billion-dollar, it's a Spanish company, auto supplier, Stamper. We were able to, you know, work with our, our economic development partners in Washington County to bring this down to fill that vacancy and they brought with it about 300 jobs.
Thank you.
How do you approach working with citizen groups, neighborhood associations or other groups that have an interest in local government policies and services?
It's, the approach is it's always open and welcoming and you have to make time for that in your daily schedule. I mean, obviously you have your council meetings and you have your, you know, the other standing committee meetings that you may have to go to, but that's, that's a critical part of governing in the 21st century. You have to make time for that. You have to make yourself available. You have to be willing to listen. And frankly, you also have to do some recruiting, you know, checking, checking your website and knowing you have some vacancies and some awards and commissions and that's a, that's a challenge for everybody. It doesn't matter what size your community is. COVID had something to do with that, but I also think people, you know, people lead busy lives and people tend to, you know, the great thing about the internet is that you have more access to the government, but the downside is you have less people that want to be directly involved because they can be involved from a distance. And there's, there's good and bad, good and bad with that. So I guess just to sum, you have to make yourself available. You have to. You have to be open and you have to communicate and you have to be a willing partner.
Okay. How do you evaluate the performance of department heads and the activities for which they have responsibility?
Yeah, so there's, there's, there's a million different performance tools that you can use, you know, one to five, the narrative and frankly, throughout my career, you can career and use all of those. But really the, you know, sort of the, the proof in the pudding is, is the, is the department operating well? Is it functioning well, top to bottom? And so that's a responsibility of the department director. As a city manager, it's your obligation to make sure that the people that work with you and for you have the right tools available. And that's also, you know, it's kind of a dual metric, making sure that we're communicating to council the needs of the department and then making sure that folks have the right tools. Communication is key and, you know, I know the size of your organization, you have 22 or 23 employees. So the great thing about that and for me personally is you get a chance to really know folks, everybody in your organization. And there is obviously a formal reporting structure you have. I know you have, I believe it's two unions here. You have a POLC and I think, I'm not sure who represents your community folks. If it's not Team Search 214, you guys probably asked me, I would imagine. So you have those formal type reporting structures, but really it's establishing a relationship with your employees, setting the expectation. And really a lot of that maps back to the strategic planning process I talked about where, you're on a July one to June thirty fiscal year here, I believe. So having that first strategic plan session where, as a staff, we prepare that, prepare for that, talk to council about what we'd like to accomplish, what we'd like to see, you know, obviously that maps to the community and the council's goals, and then making sure those goals are met. And that's another way, you know, and that's a responsibility of all of us. As an employer, you know, I've had to terminate folks before, not a lot fortunately, but really the goal is to make sure everybody has the resources, the tools, and the understanding of what their job is and what the expectation is.
Thank you. Please relate your experience in developing a community's identity, what programs and activities had a beneficial impact on developing a sense of the community.
Sure. So one of the great things about communities like Williamson or Dexter or Chelsea, one of your biggest promoters for community is your school. And Williamson, you have fantastic schools here and that's a great brand, you know, your programs are great, your sports teams are really good, your extracurriculars are really good. So that's one way. But as far as a specific community identity, one of the things that we've done in Chelsea, we did, back during the recession, two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, we sat in a room and figured out, okay, how do we make things better here? It's pretty good, it's a good place, but how do we develop an identity? How do we make sure people that may want to come to the area put Chelsea as front of mind? So we went through our small strategic planning process, we ended up hiring an advertising agency, created a brand for it, created a logo. I will say your logo is fantastic, the red cedar parting, the W, it's awesome. And so that's a great start, but you do have to do some, governments typically are a little hesitant to do traditional advertising. And we've, where I'm at now, we've morphed into that over time. Through our Chamber of Commerce and Downtown Development Authority, we've used ads on M Live and we've driven hits to our website, you know, went from, you know, a thousand or so a month to the hundred thousands. And it's, you know, you have to use the tools of the day that are available. So it's creating that brand, which you have a strong brand now, and then it's really strengthening the story and telling that story. And it maps back to some of the economic development questions. And you already have these, I think you all know that, I mean, you have a lot of great, great stuff here and you have a river, I mean, you have a theater. You have, the Commons is fantastic, so you have a great neighborhood, so you have a lot of those things already. You're right off the highway if someone was to relocate a business here. And one of the things you can do in a community this size, you can one at a time, you know, hey, we have a vacancy in a building, it's been vacant for a while, let's all get together and look at this building, what can we do? It's sort of an all call, how do we figure out how to do something positive there? And you could apply that to the industrial park as well. If you, I'm not sure if you have vacancies there or not right now, you probably have vacant land, I'm sure. But if there's something that the community really wants or needs, you know, we get together, work with the chamber, work with the DDA, it's in the DDA and if the school is appropriate, and make it happen.
Describe your experience in managing municipal finances. Give us an example or two of innovative productivity improvements or cost savings you have proposed and their outcomes.
Sure. So as a city manager, for fourteen and a half years, I put together fourteen municipal budgets. The budget in Chelsea is right around twenty million, which is, it's a little bigger than here. Chelsea's a public power community, so that accounts for about half the budget. So, you know, when you look at it from that perspective, it's about the same size as Williamson. So there is that aspect and that's, as a city manager, you have direct responsibility for that. You know, you're not necessarily, you know, manipulating everything in B S and A, but you are responsible ultimately for the budget. You presented the council, understood by the community, and then adopted and then sticking to it. In Chelsea, when I started there, we had a real issue with billing. And we were underbilling and overbilling and billing wrong. So we had to completely relook at that process. And we created a system where we had, the demarcation point was about eighteen, was that we have eighteen really large customers. And anything below that was all about the same, it wasn't much bigger than your average household. So we created a, it's an own internal audit system of those eighteen top customers because every month we look at those eighteen and we do have that extra billing on there, which is electric, but you know, it's just one other cell on the spreadsheet. But looking at that and making sure that, you know, the schools didn't get overbilled that month, or if there was a significant change, wow, they didn't use a lot, as much water this time, why not? Or, you know, they were shut down for the summer, okay, that makes sense, they didn't use as much electricity. So by doing that, we were able to almost completely eliminate any of the deficits that were created. And also, we don't, we may have a billing error from time to time, but if we do, it only lasts, you know, it's one cycle, it's one month. And for example, if Chelsea has a hospital, the hospital has a bill that significantly skyrocketed up, we would call them the minute our billing process was done and say, hey, what's going on there, what's different? And that's sort of, when you're a smaller community and it's scalable, you can do those kind of things because you're gonna know the person on the other end who's, you know, paying that bill. So that's one. The other is with other post-employment benefits, there was a seven million dollar liability that I inherited when I went to work there. And so primarily it was, there was retiree healthcare, there was really no provision for paying that as time went on. So in partnership with our unions and our council and our employee groups, we were able to move the employees to a health savings account, retiree health savings account, all new employees. We honored our commitments that we had to the employees that have retired or there were a handful that were very close to retirement that we allowed them to keep that benefit. So, I mean, that was a direct, that has, you know, obviously, even back then, that wasn't part of the Gatsby accounting standards, but you're required to report those things now. So that's a six million dollar savings on the balance sheet.
All right. With the situation where to ever come about where you became privately involved in a business in Williamson, such as being an owner or part owner, how would you make sure to keep your duties as city manager and the private business owner separate?
I can say with a hundred percent certainty that I would not do that, that that's not something that I'm interested in, but I will answer for the sake of the question. Every, every community that I've worked in, it's been allowed to have outside work, you know, whether, for me specifically or for the employees. So it's making absolutely sure that that's documented, that your business relationship is documented, that there is absolutely, there is nothing, there is no crossing of anything with that employee and that business, there just can't. You don't even want, you know, there's impropriety, but then there's also the air of impropriety. And then also now we have Facebook, which, you know, everything is, you know, could be the air of impropriety. So, so me personally, I wouldn't, that's something that would be interested. If I wanted to be in private business, then I would move on to private business.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you more of a leader or a manager? Describe for us how you exemplify the best of that quality.
Yeah, I'm a leader. I have no doubt I'm a leader. You know, managing is, you know, that's a set of tools and it's really a cookbook and anybody can follow the cookbook. But as you know, in municipal government, the ingredients change all the time. And so you have to be portable. And the last eighteen months or so have really, I guess, probably differentiated between leaders and managers. We were able to come out, mostly through the pandemic, with no service, loss of service, we were able to keep the doors open, we were able to keep everybody employed, we were able to maintain our finances. We actually, actually did better and a lot of communities probably did that. I'm not talking about the individual business, I'm talking about the municipal budget. And a lot of that had to do with the uncertainty of revenue sharing from the state. Nobody really had any idea what that was gonna look like and we were told, you know, the doom and gloom in the early part. So, you know, it would have been easy to, you know, bail on municipal government during that time because the service demands were, they were actually greater because more people were home. More people, you know, they were ready at Tuesday at seven AM, you know, for the garbage truck to go by. You know, if they didn't show up at seven, they wanted to know why. So, so I think leading through the pandemic is probably, you know, an overarching, arching viewpoint of why I believe I'm a leader.
What do you see as our strengths as a community and how do you plan on building on them?
Yeah, I think definitely, I've talked about some of those already, you have a great traditional downtown. You do have, if you choose, you do have land that's near the highway, that's, that could be developed if that's something that the community and the council wanted to do. And really, that's looking at what, you know, what maybe doesn't Williamson have? You can always use more employment, everybody can always use that. So you have great historic neighborhoods. I think maintaining the character of those, looking through your zoning ordinance and this is maybe, is it all right if I ask a question?
We have questions, they'll be at the end.
Okay, I'll ask a question at the end. So it's gonna be about accessory dwelling units. So it's really, it's, so you have all of those things to build on, you have a great logo, you have a great brand, and I think adding to it is just continuing to tell the story to folks and broadening that reach to the community. If you're comfortable being a town of right around four thousand people, that's fantastic, let's be the best town of the four thousand people that we can be. And back to the theory of you can really one at a time if you have a vacancy or if something's not going well, let's work together on that particular issue and solve it and make it happen or bring that business or that thing or that amenity to town.
Okay. What are, what are our weaknesses and how do you plan to overcome them?
As a community?
Yes.
I would say partly it's, you know, what happens just outside your border and that's working, you know, you have to work in partnerships with, it's Weetfield and Williamson Township, but we, working with them, doing what you can to make sure the development that's beyond your border, that is consistent with the community. Because I don't think anybody, I don't think folks roll around saying, hey, I live in Weetfield Township, maybe they do, but they identify that they live in Williamson, right? And so, so I think the things that are good for the region are good for Williamson. So I would say that, I wouldn't say that's a weakness necessarily, but that's always a concern when, you know, when you're the town surrounded by, when you're smack in the middle of townships and you really don't have any control of other development that's there. So not sure that it's a weakness, I'm not sure, I know you have some four twenty-five agreements with those townships, but it'd be strengthening that relationship. And then making sure that you're getting the kind of development that you want. I don't know if that's a weakness per se, but that's always a, it's more of a, I guess, a threat. And finally, it's kind of the accessory dwelling question is making sure that, you know, that the housing development that happens, that there's more of a lean towards historic preservation, not necessarily on the legislative side, but making sure that the historic homes are preserved, that their integrity is preserved because along with that great historic traditional downtown, you do have great neighborhoods here.
Thank you. What do you see as the most critical problem facing the city of Williamson?
The most critical problem that really that every community right now is facing is still the uncertainty with COVID. And are we, are we completely through that? And I don't necessarily mean with, you know, with vaccine mandates and masks, because that's a whole, that's a time for, you know, we can have that discussion at the tavern in three months. But it's more, what truly is gonna be the economic impact? And are we poised as a community? Do we have enough of a fund reserve that if the economy does take a downward turn, are we able to continue to provide the services that we already provide?
What is the most important skill or talent a manager can have when it comes to council-manager relationship success? And please tell us about a time when you needed to use that talent to build or improve relationships.
It's communication, it has to be communication. If you're the best accountant in the world and you're not communicating to the seven folks that you report to, you have no chance to be successful. So part of building that communication for everybody and everybody hearing, you know, the same vision and sharing that same vision starts with strategic planning. And it starts with that, it starts with that formalized process in February leading into budget, but it's also making sure that communications are shared with everyone. And I think that when I started, that was not the case. Interesting, Chelsea had become a city just in two thousand and four and so they had written into the charter, and I admit I hadn't read your charter chapter in verse, I know it's available, but it was written into the charter that council members, it's pretty typical that council members are supposed to work through the city manager, but it was like more aggressive language, that council members shouldn't talk to the staff. And that was worn out of, you know, council members were going to this staff person or that staff person. And, you know, over time, I mean, you know, as you get more comfortable in your role, some of that's always gonna happen, you're gonna see the DPW director at the gas station or you may, you may see the police chief at a community event and you have to have enough, you know, there has to be enough communication in a broad sense and a direct sense that those kind of things happen and frankly, to get to the point where you encourage it. So on the specific side, I mean, that's a daily occurrence, it really is. You have to make sure that any communication, whether it comes to, you know, address to the city, that it's shared with everybody.
All right, our question thirteen, so I'm kind of getting towards that halfway. What tools and techniques have you used to keep the community informed and engaged with what is going on in their local government? How do you know if they're working as well as they can be? And examples would be city webpage, social media, or news outlets?
Yeah, so we use all those, all those and it's, you can have the metrics, I think I mentioned M Live ads and so, yeah, we had a lot of people visit the website, but it's like how sticky was the website when they were there? So it's those kind of, you know, newer, those, they're not, they're not new. For Mr. Laney, they're not new, they're not new, but for maybe for someone like me, they're newer. So there's that. A lot of, you get your effectiveness, you just ask people, hey, did you know? And frankly, if your message is not getting out to folks, they're gonna tell you. If there's something going on, there's a project in downtown Chelsea that fortunately is done now, but it was a fiber optic project and it was a, it was a direct bore and it was underneath Main Street. And I've been communicating that to the community, we were lucky, we knew about it for three years, I've been talking about it for three years. Because a disruption like that, a potential disruption, that's catastrophic. If you're, if something would have went wrong and they lost the borehead, they would have had to open up the street or the sidewalk and that's right on Main Street and there was a wine lemon shopping event this weekend and this project was supposed to wrap up then. So I've been talking about this project for three years to get people prepared. Kind of like, a little bit like Chicken Little because fortunately, nothing bad happened, but my experience has told me you can't over-communicate the big things like that, you just can't. So it's, there was another part of that question, can you read?
Yeah, I repeated it. What tools and techniques have you used to keep the community informed and engaged with what is going on in local government and how, you know, they're working as well as it can be?
Yeah, so people will tell you, the other thing that I've done on the off, we meet twice a month and so like on the off Friday heading into a Monday where you don't have a meeting, I do a written city manager report. And I share that with the council, the staff, and the local online media source. And it's not, it's not a full deep dive into everything we're doing, but it's more of a prompt for folks, so at least they've seen it a couple of times. And then it is with that, with that online news source is checking with the editor of that and making sure that, you know, it's being seen. You know, you can have your city website, and you have a good city website, but sometimes there's sections of it that people never get to, you know? And if you're posting like Halloween hours buried on the public works page, you know, most people are gonna deep, they're not gonna deep that, dig that deep for that.
Thank you.
Tell us how you feel you would fit into our organization here.
I think I fit in really well. I think that I've worked in smaller communities for the past seventeen years. I appreciate the value of small towns. I don't know any of your staff personally, you know, what I read, I think, I know you feel very highly of your treasurer, Ms. Piner. I know that Ms. Thompson does a great job as a clerk, I know she's one of the works as a clerk. I know your, I know your police chief came from Michigan State Police, he's retired from there and he's reasonably new here, but he seems like he's doing a great job. And again, you know, growing up in this small town where there's one school, one town, you know, I know I fit in well with that. And I also, you know, the great thing about, you know, having your meetings and not just with the staff, I think that watching all of you in action, I think that I would be a good fit here.
Thank you.
What distinguishing characteristics do you remember to tell?
That's a tough one. So I think, I think what maybe distinguished me, now use that, you know, of setting me apart, I mean, I assume most of the folks that you're gonna interview, you know, they put together a budget in that they've, you know, they've managed at least for a time, they may have, you know, had a time, they may have, you know, had a successful economic development project or two. But I think that, as I said, I grew up in Durant, and I used to scrimmage Williamson in basketball every Thanksgiving weekend, used to beat the pants office. So I have a familiarity with Williamson, maybe that most folks won't. I think that would distinguish me. Now, I went to school right up the road near Lansing. I think knowing the community, my knowledge of the community is probably as great as opposed to, unless you have an internal candidate, which I don't believe you have. As far as like leadership and my individual style, I think that you have a great team. You've assembled a great team here, or Corey, Mr. Schmidt did. And I think that one of the things that I can do is seamlessly transition in and keep up that good work and that good camaraderie that's been built here. I don't have, you know, I've done this successfully long enough, I don't have a, everybody has a little bit of an ego to be in a leadership position, but, you know, I don't feel the need to come in and put my stamp on things, put my stamp on people and tell everybody how wonderful I was and all these amazing things I did other places, because people don't care, you know? This is the job that I'm interested in, a job that I want to, you know, and I want to fit into the culture here.
What issues do you feel are the most challenging in this position? And how would you work through those issues?
So the most challenging, again, with the, ensuring the local economy is strong and making sure that, you know, as a council and as a community, that we're working the best we can to stay out of that way, there is that. I know that you had recent upgrades to your water and wastewater systems, and I think it was 2017, making sure that there is plenty of capacity. I don't know specifically the types of technologies that you have, but that's the thing, once you know it, you know it, whether it's reverse osmosis or life softening, or, you know, it's oxidation dish for the wastewater plant. It's knowing those things, ensuring that there's enough capacity, you know, if the community did want to grow, because if you don't have water wastewater capacity, your debt, your community's not growing. And that's from firsthand experience. I walked into Chelsea and we were right in the middle of losing a lawsuit over wastewater capacity, and so we had set about building a $12 million wastewater treatment plant. And I can tell you, we didn't have the money in the back pocket to pay for it. So we had several years of rate increases and explaining, communicating to folks that this has to be done, that it has to, or the community, the community can't, it can't grow, it can't.
There will be interaction with the department managers. What strategies do you use that are most effective to help build consensus within the team?
Yeah, I think there's the formal reporting structure that you have, and then every community has a rhythm that's a little different. Some groups will meet like the day after the council meeting, sort of recap, I tend to like that approach. Then you could talk about, okay, you know, this was approved, let's make sure this is set in motion. And then that's also sort of the pre-meeting to the next council agenda. And those are very quick. I mean, I, boy, if you, you can send somebody to the moon in an hour meeting, right? Anything more than an hour, you know, because we're not, the work here is important, it's meaningful and I love it and I'm made for it, but most of the things we do, you don't need to spend hours and hours like rehashing and going over things. So there's that formal, and I use formal, I don't mean formal like a council meeting, but like, hey, you know, Tuesday morning at 9:30 is the agenda meeting, is what we would call it. But it's getting out there, it's getting to know, not just the department directors, but getting to know the people that work for them. And not watching them or, you know, observing them, it's just getting to know them. And again, getting feedback from them, knowing, you know, what tools do they need to do their job, making sure that we have the right tool for the right job. So it's a formal reporting structure, but it's also, it's also being available without being a nuisance, without being ever-present. I mean, you know, what last thing you want is when DBW, if they're, you know, collecting leaves or something like that, and I'm not riding behind them at two miles an hour making sure that every leaf is getting picked up. But it's like, you know, stopping every once in a while, having lunch, you know, just getting to know the people that are in your organization. And that builds the camaraderie, it builds the trust.
Describe your work style and how it would fit into a busy and demanding municipality office environment.
So, having done this for, you know, almost more than 20 years now, that there's, you can't last this long without having, you know, I guess, the right strategies to manage your time and manage the demands of the job. So my work style, I'm a high-energy person, you know, I'm, you know, I'm a positive person, I'm a caring person, but I'm also, I'm a relentless person. I don't have a lot of extra hobbies outside of work. I have a great work-life balance though, I mean, you know, I love what I love and there's few of those. I don't have, you know, 50 things that are pulling me in a bunch of different directions. You know, it's family, work, and then, you know, a little bit of basketball, a little bit of curling. So I've got the, you know, I've, it's an art, you know, it's not a science. No one can give you a guidebook and say, well, this is what a city manager's, you know, day, week, month, quarter year is going to look like. So you develop your own strategies. Again, if there was a question about interacting with community groups earlier, you have to make time in your schedule to do that. You have to, or you can't do the job effectively. So that's a big part of it. Knowing, most of your meetings here are in the evening, that's something I've been going to night meetings for 20 years, more than, more than a couple a month, and that's the job, right? My family understands that's the job, so I don't have any concerns about that. And then really, you know, when you're making time, technology has really, really made it a lot easier to do this job, and that's, you know, probably one of the most simplistic statements you'll hear all day. But it's true. When you get an email from a resident on a Sunday that, you know, hey, maybe they want to know one leaf collection, you email them back, you know? You have that on your phone, and that's, I want to tell you, that's not being a workaholic, that's just being, geez, I really, this person wants to answer, and I can just tell them, hey, it's Tuesday. That's, you have to have, you have your overall schedule that's kind of set for you with community meetings, and then you have your own, you know, survival skills to, anything you can do in five or 10 minutes, you get it done.
All right, we are on question 19.
I lost track a little bit.
There's basically four questions left before we head into that final period. As of March 2020, COVID-19 has had a direct effect on how daily business is carried out. What changes did you make to safety protocols because of COVID-19? What is important to you regarding daily municipality activities and operations and being able to move forward with continued safety for the community and city staff? And that was a long one, if you need me to repeat it.
Yeah, I'll take the first one. So then I'll have to, I'll have to ask you for the rest of it. So when the pandemic started, again, none of us have been through this, you know, it's very few people that are alive on the planet that have been through a pandemic like this. In 1918 was the last one, so there was just so much uncertainty. So what we did, we did create in the early stage of the pandemic when there was uncertainty, we created a platoon system for work, and so we had, and again, being a small agency, if COVID goes through your agency, you're sunk, there is nobody else. You know, you have 23 people, maybe if impacting the entire police force, you could work with Ingham County to help. So we instituted a platoon system to keep employees separate as much as we could, right down to, you know, this public works crew work together, these two work together, these two work together, these two work together. So we instituted that platoon system really across the organization, and for most of our departments, it broke pretty well that we were able to do that. You know, we had a good even number to do that, so. So there was that, and that was the, I guess, the major structural change. We were already merging a little bit towards some, allowing some remote work, but as you know, the municipal work, and I support remote work when it makes sense, but people still want to keep in contact with their local government, they still want to come in, they still want to come pay their bills. So it's making sure you have the right safety protocols in place, whether it's, you know, masks, Plexiglas, even as simple as a Dropbox for folks that still want to like hand in their bill. You have the ability here, I think most of the things that you can pay are automated or online, which is great. I mean, that's a step that was already there, so maybe encouraging, encouraging more of that. So, so those are the measures or the things that were put in place, and, you know, you can always, always put those things in place if need be, is having more of that platoon system. And then where possible, and working with, you know, the relationship that you have, I mentioned it, you know, the theoretical, if the police department here was impacted by COVID and no one could work, I mean, you're going to have to work with Ingham County to get coverage for that. Or water wastewater treatment plant, knowing operators and, you know, having that experience of, you know, not working a lot of other communities, but enough and working long enough to have relationships that, you know, I know, I know folks that are licensed water wastewater operators that you could hire in a pinch if you needed to. And that really goes across the board, whether it's, you know, your clerk or your finance director or your city manager.
Great, thank you.
Okay, here's a scenario for you. Two different department managers give you priority projects at the same time with the same deadline. How would you handle this situation?
With the same deadline, I'm not quite sure I understand the deadline part.
Okay, let's just say that you've got two major projects that are, the council wants them.
Right.
The two department managers come to you and say, hey, our deadline is, you know, 30 days out, and we both have to get these done at the same time. How would you handle that situation?
Yeah, you'd have to, if there is a deadline and it's a council directive, you get it done. I mean, that's, that's the answer. And you would hope you wouldn't get into that scenario. I guess I could understand how that would happen, but you would, you would work as a manager, I mean, you would work, you know, double, triple, whatever you needed to do to make sure that both of the projects were done. If there were priorities of the city council and there were, there were things that the entire council agreed on, then the answer is you get them both done.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we got another scenario for you. And it's a long one, so if you need me to repeat it, just let me know. It's 8:00 AM and you're just around at the office. There's a voicemail for you from a resident that is upset over the current water sewer rates and has had a water main break over the weekend that has not been completely restored in their neighborhood. The resident has mentioned in the voicemail that they will be calling the local newspaper to have a reporter come out and do a story on the subject. How do you handle this?
The first call would be to Scott at DBW or the mayor and give an understanding of, you know, did the break actually happen? Did that happen? It's not that you don't believe the resident, you just want to make sure that you have the facts and get as much understanding as you can before you speak to them. And then I would call a resident back, because I would know what the rates are. And, you know, I would explain that, you know, we have a rate system that's been created over time, the rate, you know, it's not a money-making venture, the rates are there to sustain utility and make sure that we have, you know, modern equipment and that our water and wastewater is, plants are operating successfully. And then I would ask if the resident was home, and I would see if they're available to maintain and talk through it. And if we had not finished a water main break, part of that first call would be, hey, you know, 115 Summit, there's a break and it's not done, we need to, we need to have action and we need to be out there in under 15 minutes. So mobilize everybody, mobilize who you have to, I'll go out there and, you know, I'll do the best I can with the resident so that you can set about doing the work of fixing the main and away we go. And then hopefully the answer is good enough. As far as calling the paper or calling, they're going to be on Facebook first probably for the first three or four hours on Sunday or Nextdoor or whatever, whatever app, and that's okay, and that's just, that's part of the job, it is. So, but we, we, you know, 100% of the calls that come in or concerns that people have, you respond to 100% of them.
Hey, last question. What would your past boss, supervisor, city council, or mayor say about your work ethic?
They would say that, I think they would use the word relentless, I think they would use that, the term that I have a good sense of humor. I think they would say that I care about the people that I work for and the people that I work with. And they would say that, you know, I hold people accountable, but without being a micromanager, without being, you know, some sort of dictator.
Back to me for the last two items. Is there anything else job-related that would be important for us to know when considering whether to hire you over another qualified candidate?
I think that, you know, I've said it probably more than a few times, that my desire to be in a community of this size, and, you know, I worked in Royal Oak and, you know, had a great experience there, but that wasn't really, you know, my personality or the kind of community that I wanted to work in. I'm not someone who's a serial job hopper. And this is a, it's a funny profession, because, you know, really, you expect that you just spend five years somewhere and that's acceptable, and really, even after two years, it's kind of okay to move on, and that, that doesn't fit me either. So my desire, working a town this size, to be here, to be in Williamson, there's, you can go on MML, there's a bunch of jobs available, and this is the only one that I'm applying for. And while I have a lot of experience, you know, and my kids aren't young, I have two kids in college and one in high school, I have a long way to go to work because I want to work, because I enjoy this kind of work. So I think those are things that, you know, when you're considering folks, if you hire me, I plan to be here for a long time. I think my most recent work history shows that.
All right, your opportunity, what questions do you have or additional information that you would like to share with us at this time?
So I count six, so I know.
We do. We have, we have one council member that's out due to illness.
Okay, okay, fair enough, fair enough.
So we are council of seven.
Okay, yep, I knew it was council of seven, I was trying to, couldn't remember Mr. Siebel, I know he was, I couldn't remember if he was recently appointed, you know, a week or so ago or not, so.
Yes, you are.
And I had a question about accessory dwelling units.
Sure.
Is that, is that working pretty well for the community, or, if you don't want to answer, it's okay.
Well, what do you think, no? Yeah, no.
We can bring that up in the second interview.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
That would probably be a more in-depth question that we'll leave for that time.
Okay, fair enough. The other question I would have would be, you know, the timing of the process.
Sure.
And that's, I'm not, I don't have like a, you know, a worry or sense of urgency about that, I just want to know what the meeting schedule might be moving forward.
So this week, this evening and Thursday will be first round interviews, and at that point, we'll deliberate, determine who we would like to bring back for those second round questions, the more in-depth questions. Next week is a short week, obviously, because of Thanksgiving, so we hope that we'll be able to contact candidates before we go on holiday break. If not, it'll be the beginning of that very next week, so that we can get interviews set up for the beginning of December.
Okay.
And, you know, depending on timeline and if everything goes well, I would suspect that we might be able to make an offer going into Christmas break.
Okay.
With coming out at the beginning of the year. And so that's kind of where I see the timeline flowing, following as long as nothing happens within the next, you know, 45 days.
Okay. That's kind of what I expected, just based on the time of the holiday, so that's great. And certainly, still very interested, you know, if I'm asked back for a second interview, I'd welcome the opportunity to speak to you more and, you know, tell you more about my experience and how I think I'm a good fit here.
Excellent. Well, John, thank you so much for coming out to Williamson this evening, we appreciate meeting you and, and Holly, our clerk, will be in touch.
Awesome, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
All right, we're going to go ahead and do another short recess. We'll go out at 7:28, we'll be back in approximately 10 minutes. There we go. Hi, this is Mayor Gilroy. Unfortunately, I have to leave due to a family emergency, but my mayor pro temp, Noah Bellinger, is going to lead the interview, and I'll be able to watch your questions and answers after you're done.
Thank you, best of luck you need to do.
All right. Can you hear him okay? Can you hear him okay?
Yes. Could you hear us okay?
Yep, a little faint, but I hear, I think I got it.
All right, so everybody have to speak up nice and loud. You guys ready to go?
Yes.
Okay. Let me hear everything progress. Start from here. I think you're good.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Brett, thank you for coming and being the interviewer here in Williamson. We'd like to do a quick introduction to the different board members. My name's Noah Bellinger, I'm mayor pro temp. I've been here in the city of Williamson for 35-plus years and have, you know, 14-plus years on council and in different boards.
Brandon Lanyon.
Brandon Lanyon, a city council member. I've been on the council for roughly a year on other boards, for a little longer in Williamson for about four years.
Hi, I'm Tom Pratt. I was born and raised here, I've been on the city council for about one year. Welcome.
I'm Chuck Siebel, I've been on council beginning this year. Grew up partially here, so I've got some history in town.
I kind of lost the voice on that, I couldn't quite make that one out.
My name is Chuck Siebel, I've been on council here since recently. I've got some history in town, other than that, I'm new here.
Not hearing anything.
Okay, he's a new member to the board. His name's Chuck.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I heard you on this side pretty well, but on my right I couldn't hear.
Okay.
I'm Dan Reins, I was born and raised here in Williamson, I've been on council for three to four years. Thank you for being here.
Not hearing anything.
Okay, can you go get Holly, please? Be right, be right, we're going to get the clerk to see if she can come back and check some of the speakers.
Technical difficulty.
Technical difficulty. Or we could just have one person do all the questions.
It's too bad we couldn't wire these mics up to that computer somehow.
I didn't mention that, to bring the computer closer or something.
Yeah.
We could just have you through all the questions.
Apparently.
We could do that too.
Yeah.
We could just have you yell every day.
So what we have, Holly going in, he can't hear anything on this side of the room. Which is so.
Are these hooked up or no?
No, it's running, it's running.
Dan?
Okay, can you hear us now?
No.
No, because I can't.
Okay, so what we'll probably do is we'll just have us three do the questions and we'll go from there. We'll, we'll make an accommodation, we were going to do a round robin, so each one of us was going to pose a question to you and then you could answer it appropriately, but just the three of us will, will pose the questions to you as we move forward. So I think we're good, Holly? Okay.
As long as I can hear, I'm good.
Okay, that's, that's the best part. So our, our goal tonight is we have about 24 questions and we can go over them, we'll ask you and if you have any questions about the question, we'll clarify. But what we'll do is the three of us will just go through and then we're going to have an opportunity at the end for you to ask some questions. And then this is just for the first round. So any questions at this point?
Uh, no, you broke up a little bit, but I, I think I got most of it.
Okay, I'll try and go very slowly.
Yeah, it seems like the slower the better, unfortunately.
Okay, so for your first question is, what skills and abilities do you have in creating, updating and implementing strategic plans and community vision? What is your depth of experience in working on master plans?
Okay, master, what, what, do a master plan?
Yeah, what experience do you have in working on master plans?
On a master plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, yes, I have, I've, as you might know, some states call it comprehensive plans and some master. Uh, but really, from my experience, it's been the same. I've worked, I actually own a number of them. You might be aware, maybe you not, but I've been in some places where they've been quite dated. Dusty, as they say, on the shelves. And, but I've worked on a number, probably from the beginning of my 14 years of working in local government. I would say I've worked on probably a couple in Maine, a little bit of one in Mass and we looked over the open here, we haven't really worked on it. But I'm definitely familiar with the master plans and their, their different components and all these, you have an economic component, a, you know, infrastructure component, all the different components in the plans. And I've worked to update, as I say, a number of those. So I have, I have worked on those for sure. I guess the most challenging one to go into detail was one that really needed a lot of revision, it hadn't been redone in this one community for, boy, I think it was like 20 years old. And we had to pretty much, it was a remake of the whole thing. And it's quite a challenging undertaking, but I have worked most times with a committee, we formed a committee together to, you know, lend ideas and things and at least mental assistance, but done a lot of my own as well.
Okay, thank you.
What experiences have you had with economic development activities while being sensitive to community concerns and goals? Give us examples of successes and any disappointments.
Economic development activities, right?
Yep, yes, sir.
Well, I've done a lot of, pretty much everything you could think of in economic development, from basically, you know, trying to get grants for organizations and for the community. I've, I've worked on a couple initiatives to bring Main Street programs to communities. As you probably know, it's a national endeavor and we just got that here in Mylan, we just got awarded the Main Street program, put it, I should say, I got into the Main Street program. So I've, I've done those. I've worked with economic development authorities and, and business parks to try and market the available spaces there and the community as, in general.
Okay.
As for, pretty much done, just, I don't know, anything you could think of, I think, in economic development. Trying to think of a project that we'd have success on. I guess back in, when I was, a number of years ago, back in Madawaska, we, we redeveloped a, an old shopping center into a, a more of a back office type facility. And we had to gather a number of, try to gather funding for that. We got a CDVG grant, if I remember correctly, to, to kind of help us out in economic development one. And, and I remember we worked on businesses and try, well, trying to get an industry into that, into that facility. And it actually went quite well in that we, we wound up filling up half of it almost instantly. But I've been through the whole, you know, the idea of you're trying to remake a particular area like that into something that's, you know, serves a new purpose or repurposing the whole facility. It's one kind of project that comes to mind. I don't know if there's any particular type of project you're looking for, but if you can think of any area, I've done a number of them in, in a lot of ways.
Okay, so I think that's, that's fine. Tony?
Okay. How do you approach working with citizen groups, neighborhood associations or other groups that have an interest in local government policies and services?
Well, I, just about all my communities, that's a very active citizenry. I, I make myself available to the community, like I do with all my other constituents, open door policy. I'm always there to assist in whatever questions they may have, help them with any initiatives we're working on or the information that the city's trying to get out. Use many avenues of doing that, whether it's newsletters or public information feeds. And just make myself pretty much, you know, available for everyone if they got questions and things, like right now we're redoing a part of our zoning ordinance and there's a lot of questions about that. Of course, trying to dig through tomes like that. People come in, you know, people have lots of questions, so I make myself available to defend the questions and answer any questions they might have. And, you know, complaints or things like that, trash issues, which we've been having a lot up here, so they're in my mind at the moment. But basically, make myself available to the citizens. I, it's a key for that, I found out, is when you start out, is to hit the ground running, get out there, let people know you're there and the businesses or the residents and that you're there to serve them, you and the staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question number four. How do you evaluate the performance of department heads and the activities for which they are responsible?
I'm going to have to do that for one more, I didn't know that too well.
How do you evaluate the performance of department heads and the activities for which they have responsibility?
Okay, I reckon, oh. How do I evaluate, right?
Yep.
Well, I, I pretty much do the standard, you know, we have obviously evaluation and monitoring, you know, how performance is going is an ongoing thing, but I, I do still, I am still one that believes it's good to have the periodic evaluations. And some people have kind of done away with them now and, but I think that's important, even if you just have positive feedback to give, you know, your periodic, whether it be six months or a year. But just as important or most important, especially with smaller staff where you can do it, I always like to keep close contact with my employees, not to micromanage, but working with the department heads and, you know, as a, as a team. And, you know, you can evaluate as you go along in that respect, but pretty much for evaluation, the standard, you know, you do your standard evaluations. But, and, you know, I think very important though is to keep the contact and, you know, when you see issues happening to take care of them right off. I've found that making sure you keep up with your periodic meetings is very important because you can always, those are a good sign of how things are going. Make sure you have good department, department head meetings, keep everyone kind of on track, knowing what everyone else is doing and informing each other and, but it's kind of, I guess the way I look at the evaluation is the ongoing process, I mean, I got to keep my, keep my feet on the ground and also, you know, prepare for the annual or periodic ones, whatever they might be.
Thank you.
Please relate your experience in developing a community's identity. What programs and activities had a beneficial impact on developing a sense of community?
If you could, one more time, I'm sorry, just out there.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if it's mine or yours, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I'll repeat it.
Okay, so it's just, it's just, I don't know whether it's my speaker or microphone.
Please relate your experience in developing a community's identity. What programs and activities had a beneficial impact on developing a sense of community? For example, Main Street redevelopment or redevelopment of already communities?
I heard the part on Main Street development, I've worked a lot on Main Street development. Just trying to, I guess I really didn't tell, to get the questions, my apologies, I just, I wonder if I, maybe if I try headphones, you think it might be a second here, I'll see if.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
We'll wait.
I had two conferences today, my, my speaker is working fine, so I don't know what's.
If we have to, we'll sit next to that laptop and read every question.
That's fine, I'll let you do that.
Let's see if those headphones work first.
Have you had any issues with the microphones or is it, I think it's my connection here?
Unsure. Can you hear us better now?
Can you hear us now?
It helps it. Let's try it again.
Okay.
Can you hear us better now?
Uh, yeah, I think it's going to work a little better anyway, so we'll.
All right.
Well, what we'll do is we'll make a modification here, we're going to have one of our council members sit closer to the computer and he'll read all the questions. So that might be a little easier.
Okay.
All right, give me a second here, Fred.
If you think it's my end.
No, no, no.
No, no, I think this will work, okay.
Okay.
Stay connected, please.
I was going to say, because I had a good, we just had, I had another conference about 2:00, it was really clear.
Can you hear me pretty good, Fred?
Yeah, try it again now.
Can you hear me pretty well?
Oh, yes, I can.
Okay, I'm going to read these questions to you, okay, and then, and then everybody will be able to hear.
I don't need the headphones.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
Very good.
Okay, last question asked was, please relate your experience in developing a community's identity. What programs and activities had a beneficial impact on developing a sense of community?
Oh, a community's identity. Well, kind of a process we just went through here recently, we went, I mentioned we just got into the Main Street program. One of the ways to establish an identity, of course, is obviously if you ask a lot of people, everyone's going to have a slightly different idea, but there may be more that, you know, similar than not. It turned out to be the case here, we had, preparing for this Main Street program, just trying to use the example here, we had a number of meetings, community meetings, to kind of see how the current business owners, for example, downtown view things and, and what they thought would be, you know, a branding, because that's the thing we were kind of looking at, a branding sort of slogan or, or something that the, how we can uniquely identify the town. And, and I've done that before as well, not only here. I think the key, at least I found it helpful, is to try to get a group together, you know, maybe even have a couple sort of, you know, town halls or something and try to get the feedback from the residents, the business owners, see what some ideas come up, see if they're the same as what we as city leaders are thinking and, and kind of go from there. And I found that that's really important, especially if you want to have a buy-in of everyone to help out, to, you know, join in for whatever we decide to, whatever group you would finally take. So again, I think that the general community input's important, so some way organizing to get that. Another way of it being done is to maybe have people send in ideas, you know, in one place we had newsletter that we put out and asked people to submit ideas and things. But to gather the information that you can and, and, you know, obviously part of that's, whoever's doing this, like me, of course, as a manager or whatever, with any economic person that may be on board as well, is to do our research and try to see what would, you know, really honestly fits the community as well. So some things that come to mind.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Next question would be, describe your experience in managing municipal finances. Give us an example or two of innovative productivity improvements or cost savings you have proposed and their outcomes.
Well, I've always been in charge of the finances and putting the budgets together, of course, some more closely than others. In really smaller communities, I have done almost everything myself. And like here and sort of larger, like, like Williamson, I presume, I've had a finance person, bookkeeper and help. And so, but I've always put the budget together, working with the department heads and staff, my own, and worked with them to package the, you know, the, craft the budget, present it to the council. And in some communities, we've had a budget or a finance committee, so I'm used to working with them as well, if the committees have had that. Initiatives I've used to, to save big money and I am a kind of stickler on that, I guess my key is, I really want, when you're going to make a big purchase, actually I like to institute it, you know, for every purchase or for whether it be a service or a product, I really like to make sure we're getting what we need and not more, but not less either and getting the best, you know, getting the best bang for the dollar. I remember in one community. I remember in one community, that was one way I wound up saving, or cutting back the budget to a decent amount, was, it was kind of a habit to just, basically, you know, we need something, if you need just a small hammer or something, we go out and buy a luxury set or something. Try to make it appropriate to the purchase and the, really think about what you're purchasing. I always emphasize that, you know, try to think of it as your own wallet and how you would spend the money for your own. So trying to get people to think about, get the staff to think about how they make purchases and things, I thought was very important. Don't know whether that's too innovative or not, but that's one way I've done it in the past. Trying to think of an innovative approach we've done. I really think it's important to, again, it probably doesn't fall too innovative in this sense, but to really let the department heads go have free reign to start, get what they really think they need and then mind working with them to carve back and see what we can do to really get what's appropriate. Working with them is, has always worked for me very well. As for any specific innovative ways, except monitoring the spending and being careful with what we've spent. Another area too is to, is to have a good capital plan, which looks like, as I get to your budget, it looks like you have pretty good reserves for some of that. Is to, is to make sure and do your planning well, because you gotta know when you're ready to change over a big item or an infrastructure project and, and then sort through the priorities, of course, as to which one should come first. So I think it's very important to have a well-thought-out plan with input, certainly from all the department heads and everyone.
Thank you. Fred, if a situation were to ever come about where you become privately involved in a business in Williamson, such as being owner or part-owner, how would you make sure to keep your duties as city manager and private business owner separate?
Not so good, that's, as you may know, is kind of a classic and we battle with those, as ICMA usually asks these questions like that. And first of all, let me say that I would love to invest in the community, but I think it's best for the manager to do his or her best to, to stay away from that, just to say it, because you really need to keep that impartialness. So what, you know, if I really wanted to do that, you probably heard, you know, the senators and things, you maybe put up a sort of a wall or a trust and let someone else run it for you basically, because I really think it's hard, especially if, you know, I guess it's not if you're not gonna look for benefits from the city in any way, but if there's some way, I try to distance myself as much as possible on that, have a distant person take care of it and make sure that I don't have much say in it. Because I, I really do kind of feel uncomfortable with that, because I'm there serving everyone. And I think that that would cause a lot of friction with the other businesses in town. Because even if nothing's going on, there's always gonna be perception. And that's the key here, I think, is perception, is you gotta really be careful with it.
Thank you. All right, next question is, are you more of a leader or a manager? Describe for us how you exemplify the best of that quality.
Very important, very important station too. I do my best and I think I've labored over this too, as I'm sure you all know, there's probably more talk and books written and everything about leadership and management probably than any other subject, so. I really think it's important in this position to really be able to do both of those, gotta wear both of those hats. A leader, of course, is, we talk about innovation or the more, I'll say free-flowing leadership style where, you know, you're creating your vision, inspiring people to follow it, getting buy-in, drumming up new ideas and innovations. And of course, the manager on the other side is, is hungry down and making sure to implement these things, to make them work, you know, in their confines and whatever policies we have to work in. But again, I really do my best to try and use both of those hats. So I try to be just equally good as all involved. I have to say if I, it's hard to pick one, it really is. As a manager, you know, of course, the key thing here too is, as the council, you make the general broad policies and manager carries them out. So in a lot of respects, you know, you have to really make sure that manager hat's had on there too, so that, you know, you've got your lead way, but you also gotta keep with what the policies are and carry them out the way the council, you know, you attended. So I think the manager's very important. And I have found the leader part kind of depends on the particular council I'm working for in the community. Some love the manager, you know, or the administrator to more, take more of the leadership side and really come up with the ideas and do the things, where others want to be more in control of setting the policy and just saying, we want you to do the manager hat most and carry it out. So I'm open to that and I've been flexible with it, but I hope you don't think I'm asking a question, but I really, really think it's important for a person in this position to really have, be able to wear both of those hats equally well.
Thank you. Next question, what do you see as our strengths as a community and how do you plan to build upon those?
Well, obviously I've only got my, what I can gather from a distance and my research here, so I can't say I'm fully informed about, you know, things that would really work best in Williamson there. So I'll just briefly say my first thing when I ever come to the community is to be a, to drink in all the information I can and to make those final plans then, of course. But it looks, it's like you're, from what I can gather anyway, I know, you know, a fairly well-rounded community. Thing I don't know is what your thoughts are and, and how you wanna progress. We talked a little about that visioning in the community and what we wanna make of it. So I wanna really hear that before I really go forward with, you know, making major plans. But I would definitely wanna continue on with what it seems you're doing, it seems like you're doing pretty well. And you can probably tell me a lot more of the things that aren't, that I can, but it looks pretty, you know, pretty decent from my perspective right now. But building onto that is just building in the right ways for the community to work, whatever the projects that need to be going in. I dug around a bit, but I really didn't give a lot of good fodder, I have to admit.
Well, thank you, we appreciate the honest answer. So this one might kind of follow suit, but what are our weaknesses and how do you plan to overcome them?
Well, that is a tough one, because again, we're trying to figure, you know, saying the weakness here of what, what the weakness of the community could be. I'm thinking what I might have saw there, that I'm thinking is a, something that would really, the, pops to mind on that one. Have to say, I really wouldn't dare make an assessment on that till I know the one.
Understandable.
I'm gonna wanna say something that isn't, and, is I've only got clues right now, that are very bad, very weak ones.
Sure, no problem. So we'll just move right on to the next question, what do you see as the most critical problem facing the city of Williamson?
Well, like a lot, I'm gonna probably face this a little, a lot of communities right now. Of course, the, again, I can't really say this is a specific one for Williamson, but from what I've seen, you know, in a lot of communities is, what we did, we talked a little again about the visioning thing, that I found that a lot of times it's hard to get the community around to exactly, especially to begin in the economic development initiatives and housing. In those areas, I've found those are the most challenging to get consensus on, as to, you know, what way the community should move. And again, I'm not saying there is an issue like that specifically in Williamson at this time, but I know those have been challenges in a lot of communities, probably more, more often than not, that I've come upon. Probably, of course, there's always areas of finance challenging, we talked a bit about budgeting. I, you know, always trying to see if there's any places there you can do savings. I think a challenge going forward for a lot of the cities right now is a kind of a unique challenge and opportunities. As we all know, there's, there's a lot of funds coming to communities. And to figure out from, you know, from the COVID, as well as the new infrastructure bill going through, and there's just, right now is actually a, a very good time. And the key is to know what you're gonna do with these funds and how best they're going to, what you can do to best benefit the community with them. I know that's, I think that's probably, the good thing about this is it's more of an opportunity than anything, but it really, you wanna do the most you can with those funds. And I think it's a prime time to really do some good thinking and planning to, to move forward with those. Nobody can go too big of a tangent with that.
No, that was good, thank you Fred. Next question would be, what is the most important skill or talent a manager can have when it comes to council-manager relationship success? And please tell us about a time when you needed to use that talent to build or improve relationships.
I think the most important thing is, of course, there's a lot of ingredients to it, but to, I think the most important component to a council is probably showing that, showing your fairness and impartiality to all. Because obviously you're all there and, you know, you've got your constituents and I don't know if you have wards there or not, but obviously it's worse in areas, you know, it's more important in areas where you have wards and things like that, or party affiliations. But I think it's very important that I make it clear that, you know, I'm there to work for all of you equally. And, and I really want to, you know, I'm there, I found that making myself available was very important to, to all the members. But also being very, very, very conscious of keeping us all on the same page and updated with the same information. So I think the key for that relationship is to, to build that trust from the beginning, that, you know, I'm there and I wanna work as a team with the council and, and I also wanna try and be a unifier as well for all our, your differences, to try and help show the positives and the, the things you agree on rather than the ones you don't and try to work for the best of the city. So I think being a good unifier and a person to, to be there to help try to bring things together and forward things.
Okay, thank you. Our next question for you is, what tools and techniques have you used to keep the community informed and engaged with what is going on in their local government? How do you know if they are working as well as can be? The examples would be city webpage, social media, news outlets.
Used a lot of those, mostly webpages, although ours were just rebuilding, it's not that great here, don't go by that yet. But we are doing good. In the past webpage, I think webpages are probably very, still the most important, although everyone is gravitating to social media now, because everyone seems to go there, so whether you want to or not, you've got to be proficient in that. So like right now, we use a combination of all. I definitely think that we could do better here where I'm at, but for reasons, the political will is not to get dealt too much in social media right now. So we don't have a big presence on that, but the community I came from before we did. So I've used it a lot, again, I try to judge, you know, what you and they, what you think is best as well in that respect. But webpage, very important, I've used those, I mentioned the newsletters, or used those in the past. Of course nowadays that goes with webpage or social media, because you wind up posting them on the social media, so it's kind of works together. But definitely some periodic publication like that, whether you disseminate it over, over social media, or website, or most likely today, a combination of all, to keep people informed. But I also think that you gotta make yourself available too, as the manager, to, when questions come up, to be there. People call or drop in, make sure you follow up with them and keep that personal communication as well. Because I think city our size is, that's still expected. It may not be in our city of a hundred, a million or something, it's a little difficult. But for us, I think still that personal touch is very important as well. So, so that as well, but again, I don't, I use social media and websites, I get a very big involvement in websites, I think that's very, very important. And, and again, whatever, I think the key though is that publication that you make. And wherever you pull it out on another area, of course, we used a lot in some communities, it's Community Acts, that's channel. Because some people still do gravitate to the TV a lot and, so if you got one of those, I would use one of those as well and have used those.
Okay, Fred, we're gonna have to stop for a minute and get the clerk, because I think the tape ran out, so we have to flip it. So hang on just a second, don't go, don't go away, okay?
No problem, thank you.
Can you go again? Sorry. But it sounds like the quality of the sound is much better.
Yes, it is, good, yes, it is, it very helps with, with the gentleman up there reading right at the microphone, I hear it very well.
Good.
So, is there a reason to do specific things? Because.
She says everything's good.
Okay, so the good stuff.
Because I'm recording it and.
Okay.
Oh, okay, perfect.
As long as you're recording, but I hope, the other thing is recording too. So we're back on, thanks Fred.
Okay, we're ready to go Fred, if you are.
Okay, yes, I am.
Okay, next question for you is, tell us how you feel you would fit into our organization?
I think I would fit in very well, I think one thing, it looks like you're a whole-service community there. By that I mean, you know, you've got your internally, all the standard departments and you've got a nice community. I think I would fit well in the sense that I work very well in an area like that. I kinda like a community where, I guess I should talk inside and out. You know, inside a, you know, a full-service type community where you have your department heads and your staff to work with as a team. Been in some places, you know, we're not here, but we're really small, there's just me and one or a few others. And I kinda like to have a little, you know, people to work with. I'm a very, very good at working with the staff and the teams, so I think I'd fit well there. Looks like you have an engaged, again, from what I can see from my, you know, my distance. And looks like you've got a vibrant community. Again, you may have different opinions on that, but again, this is from my perspective out. So I find that I flourish well in those and you got, I like to visit the businesses and, and keep, you know, keep, keep on top of things and try to be thinking up initiatives and to better the community and to enhance what we have and keep things going well. So again, you know, a community that's about the size and that is active and running on all cylinders, I do my best in. I think I can lend as well, I always say this because it's so important, I think, is not only my, could sit really focused on doing my best in the things we talked about, you know, human resources, finance, economic development, but I really do, I do think my well-roundedness really helps. I feel, I try to be very knowledgeable. I feel, I try to be very knowledgeable in all the things that the community has to, has to delve in. And I've found in this, in this profession, you really do have to know a lot of, at least a little about a lot of things. And then besides the things you know a lot about.
Sure.
I think the broad perspective, another strength, I hope that we fit well.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to question fifteen, we've got about nine more. So what distinguishing characteristics do you bring to the table?
Well, of course distinguishing, I'm sure you've got a lot of nice candidates there, so I'm not gonna say I'm totally different, but I'll, you know, the things I'd highlight, kind of some of the things I've mentioned. I think very well-rounded, knowledgeable, I've worked in a number of different states. So I've got a broad understanding of the differences, which helps me to hit the ground running too when I do enter into a new state. I know the profession very well though and how laws are crafted, those sort of things. So again, very well-rounded and knowledgeable about the things we have to work in. I love working with people and I love doing a lot of different things. And I think, as I kind of mentioned again, not to sound too repetitive, that you really do have to be a multitasker and, and enjoy doing many different things from, you know, working in, building on, working, building a complex one day to dealing with trash pickup issues on the next day. You really have to do, you really have to, and you have to be willing to, you're not thinking you're above it, but sometimes you have to work on things that, like I just mentioned trash or whatever, that maybe you think's above you. But in a community, you really gotta be ready to fill in anywhere and help out. And I'm not too proud to do that and to, to work in wherever I'm needed. So flexible, I guess, is the word I'm looking for there. And I again, love working with my staff as a team and with the, the council members and the new ones when they come on, as well as the ones that have been there for such a long time and, and have the great knowledge that you can work with.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. On to question sixteen is, what issues do you feel would be the most challenging in this position and how would you work through those issues?
Well, as again, I can't really say specifically, but I haven't found a major challenge as yet, you know, keyed away in Houston. But, so I can't really think of, again, I worked in just about every department and of course you always think you've worked in every, had every issue, hit you in some way, hit you with hazard. But I can't really think of anything that worried me too much that I can think of. Obviously, the, the big thing I want to do when I start a new community, especially in a new state, is to get the ground running and understand the way you do things there, the different laws and rules. But I've never had any problem with that because I always start way ahead and just throw myself into it and I am very good at taking those things in. So I can't really say I can think of anything that worried me right now because I've been able to pretty much tread that quite well in the past.
Terrific, thank you. Question seventeen, there will be interaction with the department managers. What strategies do you use that are most effective to help build consensuses within the team?
Well, right from the get-go, I want to start getting to know everyone. I want to sit down, have, you know, always have that introductory meeting with everybody, all the department heads. Then I like to, I like to go and actually visit them at their place of work, whether, you know, it's the garage a few miles away or, or where have, what have you. And sit down in a one-to-one with all of them, get up to date with what they're doing now, what the projects they're concerned with. I think that starts a rapport right there and make it clear that I'm an accessible person. I give them all my cell phone, my home phone, whatever, everyone's willing, is free to call me anytime they want and I want to hear from you with issues. I'd rather you call me, I want to know about things when they come up, when you want to tell me about them. So making, I have an open door policy, of course, that goes along with that, making sure that I'm there and I, you know, in a community our size, I, I don't think a day goes by, I don't see at least most of my department heads every day. Even if it's just passing by through the city hall, picking up Bill or something, saying hi, keeping on, keeping the area in touch. And of course periodic meetings where I invite everyone to, to speak as well. I'd like them all, us all, to tell what's going on in our world, so to speak, right now. And I really foster the team effort. I really think that's important to, and to, as a team to keep emphasizing too, that we're all there really for one's purpose and that is to carry out your wishes and your policies and to serve the public. And so we, we gotta keep on our toes and be tip-top and I, you know, and I'm one of them too. Not just telling you what to do, but I'm one of the other people as well that are there, part of that team. And we've got to work together and with each other. And I want it to help us to keep, keep solving, working in that direction. A very collaborative approach is the word I'm looking for.
Perfect, thank you. Fred, can you describe to us your work style and how it would fit into a busy and demanding municipality office environment?
Well, my work style is probably to always keep a lot of energy. In this profession, you know, it seems you need that, you definitely need that. My work style is to, obviously we all have bad days or down days, but I do my best not to display that. I think it's important to keep a positive attitude at all times. And as best you can, we're all human, but so I try to, and again, we talked about staff to make sure that I'm there engaging every day and again, I, I bridging that line between not being a micromanager, but letting people know I'm there and to work with. So my style is, you know, I'm there, you've come to see me, if there's something important, I'm gonna come and see you. And we know we have that periodic time where we're all gonna meet and talk. And again, I think the, the style that I would say is that being a parent in the office, I'm, I am one of those that likes to do, as they call it, management by walking around sometime, just going in, in the morning, just saying hi to everyone and make sure to do that, see how everyone's doing and, and just breathe high. I think that's very important. Just make, make it apparent I'm there and I'm working as well and to reemphasize that, that ethic that we're all working there as a team and we're all there every day.
Excellent, thank you. All right, now a couple of these questions are kind of scenario-based. So the first one being, as of March 2020, COVID-19 has had a direct effect on how daily business is carried out. What changes did you make to safety protocols because of COVID-19? What is important to you regarding daily municipality activities and operations and being able to move forward with continued safety for the community and city staff?
Well, like a lot of places, we kind of bounced around a bit on, on what was the best thing from the start. You can still think back on it now and I'm sure you all can too, since it kind of hit so fast. But we had a few different approaches and after that we changed going along, tried to flow, go, go with the flow as they say, because I'm sure you remember all the different scenarios or different recommendations or how we should act in this. But we always kept, you know, safety was number one. But not only me, but of course I have to recognize my board, huge gentleman as well. There was a double ethic, one was safety, but we also wanted to do our best to stay open to serve the public. And where we are up here, there was more probably of pressure to do that than where you're at. If you know anything about Missouri down here, we're one of the, the areas that didn't worry as much about it and stayed open a lot more than others. So we kind of had to reflect in the community. I know the mayor and I have lots of, lots of talk on this because I think we would like to have been a little more careful than probably the, the majority wanted us to be in the community. But we, we did our best to make, we actually, we did, we closed about half of 2020, you know, the worst part, where, but we kept the off, but we as a staff, we had a really good record of keeping the staff there. We just locked, locked the office so people couldn't come in. We did have a good situation and then we have this little drop box. So people could drop their bills off and they, we had a good speaker where you could talk with them. So that helped out a lot. And we also had, just by design, we had this room which actually already had glass in front of where the, the main clerk who takes care of the bills and everything sat. But we still closed the office for a good seven, eight months there. But we remained in the office, all of us. I mean, there were certain times that we had to, some of us went home. We got hit one time, one time the, one member of the council had it, came to a meeting and we all wore masks and everything and distancing, but two of us, excluding myself. Luckily I did not react bad, it was like at home. And, and we recovered. But, so we went through our trauma and just last month, we, you know, with the Delta and everything, we had a couple, number of officers out with it after we had opened up. But again, I was probably rambling too much here, but we tried to flow with it and put an equal balance on safety as well as trying to keep service to the public as well. Now again, I would have handled things differently and I'm sure you know that there's, wherever you go and I heard Michigan, you've got some, each side there has a little different opinion there on the state due to the way I understand it. So obviously I'm flexible. If I was in a different state, I probably would have been leaning more toward being cautious, but I'm fine with down here, we were a little more open, I think. I'm one that didn't, I'm not dogmatic on either side. You know, I'm not one that says that, certainly that's not an issue to reckon with, but I also, one that also says that life's gotta go on as well. So you gotta bridge those.
Sure, thank you. Okay, our next situational question is, two department managers give you priority projects at the exact same time with the same deadline. How would you handle this situation?
So two, two who now giving these projects?
Two of your department managers have given you projects at the same time with the same deadline.
Okay. So I'm saying, we're presuming I'm a, a department, okay. Same time, well, first thing you have to do is I'm gonna look at the, I'm going to look at the, take them in, look at them on my own here and see if I can distinguish in some way prioritize these. Obviously, my first goal will be try to get them all, both done at the same time and at all costs if I can do that. If not, if it's just one of those things where, you know, I can't do it myself or have no one to, someone to help, then I'm gonna look for something, somewhere to maybe be able to prioritize one a little bit. But I'll always will keep close communication. And again, these people that have given me these, it sounds like they are my supervisors or is it just sort of given to me? I'm thinking, if they are my supervisors and obviously I have to work with them, but even if they're not, I just want to emphasize that I would still talk with someone, talk with these two department heads and tell them, you know, not just say, hey, I'm doing this because I'm boss and I can do it, but I want to talk with them and say, hey, this is where I'm standing. We need to, I need to do something, we need to talk about one of these things here, may have to come before the other. But I think the key there is close communication to, if there did have to be some way that one would have to be done before the other, you could find a figure out which one. It was a little unclear there whether, if they're my department heads and I'm still, I guess, are we talking about the same sort of organization? Or is this kind of a situation where I'm the subordinate that's been given these orders?
No, I, I think...
You're the city's the boss.
Yeah, you're the city manager in this situation. I think, I think your answer was...
Correct.
...fit the question accordingly.
Okay, very good. That's what I thought, two department heads saying, hey, chief, we need this done and you gotta do it. Yeah, so definitely I stick to the answer there. I really would, it's not like I'm gonna just on my own say, hey, the boss, I'm doing this right now. These are important to that and I want to make sure I recognize that. And, and it just came to a point where the physically or whatever, I could not get them or have them done, I'd really want to call in together and say, hey, this is what's happening here. You gotta sit down and do the best we can to make this work out best for the city for all of us.
Sure thing, thank you. Another situational question here, it's kind of a long one. It's 8:00 AM and you've just arrived at the office. There's a voicemail for you from a resident that is upset over the current water sewer rates and has had a water main break over the weekend that has not been completely restored in their neighborhood. The resident has mentioned in the voicemail that he will be calling the local newspaper to have a reporter come out to do a story on this subject. How would you handle this situation?
I'm laughing because we, we have a couple people that do that, you're failing off. Now, whether it's water or something else. But, well, obviously the first thing I would do is call this person. Again, I think communication is the key here. And hear what they had to say, I think that's very important to let people talk. Usually they want to, sometimes they want me to talk and then I've gotta do it, but usually I want to hear what the issue is, I want to explain the situation that, you know, I'm here to help and, well, first of all, I guess, first thing I would do, if I have a little time before calling back, I'd want to call my department head of the water just to get this side of the story, to see what's going on. Because I think that's very important, there's always two sides here. So first one that leaves me the message, first thing I would do is go to the person in charge of trying to fix this and say, where do we stand? Just fill me in, I want to hear your side on this. What's the issue? Why can't we get it done? And, you know, let's, and I would say right out, you know, I got some of it all here and I want to make sure our message is, is consistent and I know fat. So that would be my first move. And, and then I would get on the phone, as I said, and depending on what I heard there from the department head, and explain the situation, why we're having an issue. Now, of course, the water rates, I know they're gonna want to talk about, that's a, a longer term thing and it's a policy thing that we can't change overnight. So I would try to focus in on this issue and getting the, the big thing done first, which is, okay, you gotta break, we gotta repair this, we gotta hit it fix or the whole area doesn't, I understand. And we are working on it. If it truly is the whole area, I would emphasize, you know, that, you know, you're not the only one, there are others that are, are being impacted as well and, and we are definitely aware and working on it. And I would say, you know, I mean, in a situation where they're threatening to go to the press, I'm always hesitant to say, no, don't do that, they don't believe in that way, not to do it, I don't think that's right. I've been able to and been successful at it. When I've explained the situation, really showed that we are working on it, usually that drops and they give you a chance before they do it. And I've always had luck that, that it worked that way. No, we'll call it luck, I think it was hard work really trying to do that. But again, working with them, trying to prevent it. And if it did come to the point where it comes to the press, what I want to make sure that I've done is to address the situation appropriately, not, even if the other person is irate, I don't want to be that one that, that returns air weakness, I want to listen calmly, explain the situation and that we're trying to do our best, and we are doing our best to, to rectify the situation and explain some of the details which I would more know, oh, know more of after talking to the private head, you know why we're having that protracted reason for, for that water outage.
Terrific, thank you, Fred. The next question is, what would your past boss, supervisor, city council, or mayor say about your work ethic?
Work ethic, definitely I think they would say very hardworking. Certainly, you know, doesn't give up on things. Certainly, you know, doesn't give up on things. Sometimes you can't hold, I think they would, I think it would be definitely hardworking, certainly hardworking. Somebody even said I put in too many hours than I need to, I'm a workaholic sometimes. So definitely hardworking, I think, very, well, the question was work ethic. Certainly, I think it'd be positive on the work ethic part, whether it be, you know, the time spent or the quality, the care for the quality I produce and reports I hand in of that nature, I think it'd be all positive.
Terrific, thank you. So now there's an opportunity where we're gonna have a couple areas where you can ask us some questions or give us some feedback. And the first one is, is there anything else job-related that would be important for us to know when considering whether to hire you over another qualified candidate?
Well, I've tried to express some of them. Again, I'm sure you've got good candidates there, but I would just emphasize, because you're gonna get a very well-rounded person who has worked in basically every department there is and worked in all types of infrastructure projects, economic development. As I say, there's always probably something that'll come up that's unique that maybe you haven't done, but I really can't think of a lot that I haven't tackled at some scale. I'm not saying it's been the biggest part, but in one way or another, I think I've probably tackled just about every situation that comes up in a municipality. So I think you're, you're gonna get solid experience for certain in all areas, all departments, everyone I can think of in the city. So very well-rounded, definitely we talked about hardworking, I don't think you're gonna find someone there that is going to put in care as much for the quality that he or she puts into what they do and willing to put the time in to make things great.
Perfect, thank you Fred. So now, we're gonna ask you, do you have any questions or additional information you would like to share with us at this time?
Well, questions, and I know I don't want to take all your time on this unless you pick me for a second interview, it's a waste of your time, but if you wanna, I don't know if you want to elaborate on, we're talking about some of the priorities right now in Williamson. Dave, if you could name one of the two of the biggest that you're concerned with at this time? And you want your manager to really, you know, hit the ground running on.
About the infrastructure, that's the biggest pressure we're on.
So one that we'd like to share with you Fred would be our infrastructure issues.
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer issues, we have some very old water and sewer mains and...
I don't know how detailed you want to go into, but we have some of the pipes and that have been here since 1927. And we need to have those, as we do street projects, we need to do complete renovation of all the services.
Do you have to relay that, I couldn't hear it?
So our biggest issue probably right now that we're dealing with is the infrastructure of our water and sewer. Some of our water and sewer lines are nearing 100 years old. So we're working to consistently get those replaced as we can.
That's, that's important, yeah, I know a lot of cities have that issue, you know, worked a lot in rebuilding water and sewer infrastructure.
Terrific. I want to talk about this week's campaign.
So Fred, I don't know if you can hear me or not, this is no log yet, but...
Well, now I can a little bit, it's funny, you pop it in and out, I heard that pretty well.
Okay, well, what we plan on doing is Thursday this week, we have another group of candidates going through for the first round of interviews. And then about a week later, we're going to be ranking those and then setting up for second interviews. So we have the holiday coming up, so hopefully we'll have some decisions, at least two we're thinking of calling back just after Thanksgiving. And then coming up in about, in December, you know, first part of December is when we're gonna hope to have this whole thing finalized.
Thank you, Ted. Yep, sounds good. Very good. Thank you.
So we thank you, we apologize for the IT and how it works.
Well, I appreciate you getting someone important things to hear the question.
Yes, thank you.
True thing. Thank you for your time Fred.
Okay.
Thank you very much for having me, I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for bringing in and then we'll let you know how the second round goes and our clerk will be sending out information as we move forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you Fred.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I didn't know if she had the setup recording or anything, so I just took her video and so...
So we will get holiday then.
Yeah.
We will adjourn this meeting at 8:45.